Councillor Hardwick is on a leave of absence from civic business. Councillor Weeb.
Present.
Councillor Boyle.
Present.
Councillor Dominado.
Present.
Councillor Bly.
Present.
Councillor Kirby Young.
Present.
You have quorum, Mayor Stewart.
Thanks very much. So the public may participate by phone, speaking in person, or submitting comments to council. Speakers have five minutes and should say whether or not they support the recommendation and whether if they're a resident of Vancouver. Speakers may only speak once and should follow along on Twitter at Fan City Clerk for updates on the progress of the meeting so they don't miss their turn. There's very few speakers registered tonight, council, just to let you know. And let's see, speakers who are pre-registered with presentations are reminded the public feed has a slight delay, so we'll help you through that. We have a longstanding commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion, so just remind council to avoid using gendered honorifics. Our role tonight is to be a quasi judicial body, which means council is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions, but save debate for close of the speaker, after the close of the speakers list. Again, we can approve. A second option was we can refuse, or the third option is to refer application to staff for further consideration. We don't finish this all tonight. We will recess and reconvene on May 31st at 6:00 PM, May 31st at 6:00 PM. First item is amendments to zoning and development bylaw in the FC1 district and to the Chinatown Eastside slash Oppenheimer District Official Development Plan bylaw to increase social housing and encourage heritage conservation. Just going to ask first, does any member wish to declare a conflict? Three, two, one. I don't hear anybody there, so the clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence.
This is a report by the General Manager of Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability to amend the Downtown Eastside Oppenheimer District Official Development Plan and FC-1 East Falls Creek District to facilitate the delivery of 100% social housing for 100% social housing in the Downtown Eastside Oppenheimer District Official Development Plan. A floor space ratio of 5.5 and a height of 7.6 metres are proposed, and an FC-1 and FSR of 6.0 with no change to the height are proposed. In both districts, a discretionary increase in density of 10% to incentivize heritage conservation is proposed. Amendments to the Downtown Eastside rezoning policy are also proposed to enable density and height beyond zoning to be determined based on heritage considerations, context, and urban design for 100% social housing projects. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendations of the public hearing agenda. No correspondence has been received on this application since referral to public hearing. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Thanks very much. Just a reminder, any speakers for this item who wish to speak, please call toll-free 1-833-3538610, code 1061445 pound before the close of the speakers list. That number's on Twitter and live stream. And of course, if you missed your chance on the list, I'll call three times at the end for anybody who wasn't registered or missed their turn that would like to speak. We have Bonnie Ma, Planner with the Downtown East Community Planning, a whole bunch of other stuff here to present the application. We do have speakers, so perhaps we should see the presentation. Please go ahead, staff.
Good evening, Mayor, council. My name is Neil Rochoey, and I am Assistant Director of Community Planning. It's my pleasure to present this item to you this evening. Bonnie Ma is here to help answer some questions as well, though.
Please go ahead.
At the April 12th council meeting, council instructed staff to bring this report forward to public hearing. The recommendations in this report. I'll wait for the the presentation to come back up.
Yeah, we can see it on WebEx. We just, I can't see it on the main screen.
There's just a slight delay. It will be up shortly.
Great, thank you very much. The recommendations in this report respond to key community and council priorities to increase social and supportive housing in the downtown east side. It will streamline the development process for 100% social housing projects by allowing greater heights and density under zoning, thereby allowing more projects to go through the development permit process. This shorter, more certain, and less costly process as compared to the zoning process will make it more likely the social housing units already anticipated, the downtown east side plan, are realized. We'll also increase funding opportunities and partnerships with provincial and federal governments as some funding programs require or prioritize projects that have zoning approval. Lastly, it integrates heritage conservation into the development and zoning rezoning process by encouraging retention and rehabilitation of heritage resources. This work advances key policies within the downtown east side plan, specifically replacing SROs, encouraging partner contributions, and building new social housing within and outside of the downtown east side. Other ongoing work, including the Broadway Plan and the Vancouver Plan, will be seeking to promote new social housing units outside of the downtown east side, distributing them in areas across the city. The 2020 Implementation Progress Memo on the Downtown East Side Plan identified the review of downtown east side policies to facilitate social housing delivery and SRO replacement as a key priority. The proposed changes are also well supported by the Housing Vancouver Strategy and Three Year Action Plan, which includes directions to streamline development processes for social housing and to allow for modest increases in heights and densities to enable non-market housing in recently approved community plans. This policy review was also included as a Quick Start action, the Vancouver Plan update, and the Quick Start Actions Report to Council last July in 2021. There remains significant housing needs in this community. As noted in an April 27th report on housing needs to city council, there are over 2,000 people experiencing homelessness as of the 2020 homeless count, and over 7,000 tenants living in SROs in need of replacement. 19% of Vancouver residents fall below Statistics Canada low income line in 2016, and many households have very low incomes relative to key expenditures like housing and face intersecting challenges. Within the downtown east side, the median household income is just $23,400, while citywide, the median household income is almost three times that, at $65,500. With ownership costs out of reach for a vast majority of Vancouver residents and market rate rentals, rental rates increasing by 45% in the past 10 years, the need for a greater supply of more affordable and non-market, including social, supportive, and co-op housing has increased over time. The areas being proposed for these changes are the downtown east side Oppenheimer District subareas 2, 3, and 4, and FC1 Thornton Park, East Falls Creek, as shown here on the map. These changes are are only proposed for 100% social housing, which in the downtown east side requires deeper levels of affordability when compared to the rest of the city, with at least 1/3 of units at the shelter rate of income assistance, 1/3 of units targeted at or below BC Housing housing income limits, and 1/3 of units up to low end of market rates. Supportive housing would also be able to come in through the changes being recommended. For projects that deliver 100% social housing, we are proposing an increase of 1 FSR to a maximum of 5.5 FSR and an increase in height to 30.5 metres, as demonstrated on this this graphic. This is equivalent to what is generally already allowed under rezoning policy today. The proposed change to the rezoning policy would allow greater increases in density and height beyond zoning to be considered based on site context, urban design, and heritage considerations for 100% social housing developments. Staff recognize that access to sunlight is an important part of ensuring livability and wellbeing for all residents. The park board has noted that sunshine is a fundamental building block of our parks. It has been the city's general practice to require new development to limit shadowing of parks and other public spaces during specified hours between the spring and fall equinoxes. City policies generally limit shadow impacts from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, with a number of policies extending to 3:00 PM or 4:00 PM or between 11:30 AM and 2:30 PM, depending on the area of the city. There are no examples of extending solar access protections to 6:00 PM. Understanding the importance of Oppenheimer Park in the downtown east side community, PDS staff explored ways to minimize potential shadowing on the park while balancing important trade-offs. In this case, the potential for much-needed social housing. Over the course of six meetings with park board staff, we worked to develop, review, and refine built form guidelines to protect sunlight on parks and public space. Based on feedback from park board staff, further solar analysis was undertaken and several changes were made to the proposed built form regulations to ensure minimal shadowing of park space to 4:00 PM. However, the purpose of this policy update before you today is not a review of solar access in parks, nor is it to create new solar access standards. This is important work that needs to be undertaken at a citywide level, careful analysis, and consideration of trade-offs. To develop the built form envelopes, a solar fan study was undertaken from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM to look at potential building heights. Anything protruding into the red area, for example, would cast a shadow on the park during the timeframe being studied. From this, staff developed specific building form envelopes that ensure no new shadows are cast from East Cordova Street on the south side, and minimal shadows are cast from Dunlevy Avenue on the west and Jackson Avenue on the east side between 10:00 AM and 4:00 PM at the equinoxes. I should note that these building forms reduce the redevelopment potential of social housing sites to approximately four and a half to five FSR, which is the maximum allowed under existing DEOD zoning and rezoning policies today. The proposed 5.5 FSR is likely not achievable on these south side sites, some of which are city-owned and nearing the end of their life. However, due to the importance of Oppenheimer Park to the downtown east side community, staff are recommending the revised built form regulations. Based on feedback from park board staff, additional analysis was completed to look at feasibility of 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. As you can see in this image, extending the timeframe to 6:00 PM significantly decreases potential building heights to the west of the park due to lower sun angles later in the day. This means a potential future social housing site on Dunlevy would no longer be possible. This development could potentially deliver an estimated 175 new social housing units. Because of increasing, because increasing social housing in the downtown east side is a key priority for the downtown east side community, this extension is not being proposed at this time. Using the geometry of the solar fan study, staff simulated building envelopes with a maximum height limit of 30.5 metres. This demonstrates the height that may be achievable without shadowing the park between 10:00 AM and 4:00 PM. A maximum density of 4.5 to 5 FSR would likely be achievable on these sites. The proposed additional density of 5.5 FSR in the DEOD may not be achievable on all sites. Again, to note, the massing shown in the above graphic is beyond allowable densities and does not represent anticipated building forms. It is purely a study. With a 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM envelope, you can see the buildings to the west of the park across Dunlevy Avenue have significantly less height potential than currently allowed by zoning due to the lower sun angles later in the afternoon. Extending the timeframe also impacts buildings further away from the park. The proposed built form regulations balance the need for sunlight protection from the 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM window between the spring and fall equinoxes, while not unreasonably limiting development potential for social housing. Built form regulations for an extension to 6:00 PM are not recommended as it would severely impact social housing development potential and lead to the loss of potential new social housing units. Turning to the proposed changes in the FC1 zone. For projects that deliver 100% social housing, we are proposing an increase of 1 FSR to a total maximum of 6 FSR, the maximum of 4.5 FSR for residential use. No additional height is being proposed as the existing zoning allows for conditional heights to be considered up to 83.9 metres, but not to encroach on the protected public views. The proposed change for the rezoning policy would allow for both height and density beyond zoning to be considered based upon site context, urban design, and heritage considerations, 100% of social housing developments. Since the plan was adopted, approvals have exceeded our 10-year social housing target of 1,400 units and are well on our way to the 30-year target of 4,400 units. Specifically, there have been just over 1,900 social housing units approved in the downtown east side, and 550 of these units have been completed. Almost half of these have been secured at the shelter rate of income assistance. Though we are making progress towards achieving targets set through the downtown east side plan, there remains a significant need for social housing. We estimate these proposed changes could increase the number of social housing units under zoning by as much as 20 to 25% over the next 20 years. Without these changes, these projects may have come in through the rezoning process, which already allows these heights and densities. However, streamlining the development process for nonprofit providers will allow these projects to happen faster, provide a better opportunity to deepen affordability by securing senior government funding. For this policy update, we undertook broad online engagement through email notifications, an information website, and an online survey. We also held three virtual stakeholder sessions with downtown east side nonprofit organizations, service, and housing providers. with downtown east side nonprofit organizations, service and housing providers, and the former downtown east side Local Area Plan Process Committee, or LAP Committee, as some of you know. We heard mixed feedback through the broad public engagement process, with some expressing the need for deeper levels of housing affordability and also a desire to see more social housing delivered outside of the downtown east side. Feedback heard through the virtual stakeholder sessions were generally supportive, with stakeholders highlighting the need for the delivery of social housing both within and outside of the downtown east side, support to replace single-room occupancy rooms with self-contained social housing units, as well as overall support for zoning changes to allow for to allowable height and density to improve the delivery of more social housing units. In closing, the recommendations in this report enable a modest increase in density and height through the development permit process that allows for projects that deliver 100% social housing, rather than through the longer, more complex rezoning process. This would reduce application times and make the delivery of social housing more feasible. Further, it would provide nonprofit housing organizations with greater opportunity to leverage current provincial and federal funding programs, which help to increase the viability of social housing developments. Thank you very much for your time. Staff are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks. There are a number of questions. I'll start with councillor Swanson, up to five minutes. Here on mute, I think.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm understanding from the report that the income mix in this social housing will be one-third at shelter, one-third at hills or below, and one-third at low end of market. So my question is, is that true? And if so, will there be housing agreements to guarantee this mix?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Ed Natcho, Senior Planner and Housing Policy. Yes, that is the definition of social housing in the downtown east side. And yes, we secure all of our social housing through housing agreements.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. I have some questions. So I'm just trying to understand all this shadowing stuff. So my first question is, with the recommendations you have now, did we lose any potential units from the what looks like a compromise?
The there is the potential, the as I mentioned in the the report. Mayor, thank you very much for your question. There is the potential to lose some of the potential density that is being proposed. And it's likely that we'll achieve densities immediately around the park that are in line with current zoning and rezoning policy. So yes, we would be leaving a little bit of something on the table.
And how much is a little bit? Can you give me a just a rough estimate of, you know, one-bedroom units or or studio units? How many we could potentially lose from making this adjustment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did not estimate the number of units that would be lost due to those those changes in the building regulation, building form regulation. It was estimated at 0.5 to 1 FSR is the potential loss of of density.
So floor, perhaps. Okay. And is this a board policy? So is this something that that the board sent to us? Or is this through staff discussions?
Mr. Mayor, this is Teresa O'Donnell, the General Manager of Planning. And I believe we have our General Manager of Park Board on the on the line. And perhaps GM Rosa could answer that for us.
Great.
Thank you very much for the question, GM Donnie Rosa with the Park Board. This is actually a staff contribution to the discussion. We we are leaning into the work that we had had completed during Van Play, saying that 10 to 6 was the appropriate policy to have for sun for solar access. We believe that 10 to 4 would limit the amount of programming that can happen in an already much-needed park and also impact an area where, when we're adding density, this is the backyard that people have. So park board park board staff, Parks and Recreation staff advice is that at minimum, a 10 to 5 solar access policy versus continuing on with this solar access practice that's been in place.
Okay, so just to be straight, though, this this is is this something the board has considered and agreed upon? Or or has voted into kind of? I'm just kind of confused about about where the, I guess, where this sits in terms of formal adoption.
Thank you for that. There is no formal adoption at this point. Staff are asking for a policy.
Okay, and so the current, maybe planning staff can can refresh us on where our current shadowing policy comes from. Is that policy formally adopted by council? Is that something over the years that we've adopted?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. This is Teresa O'Donnell. For this particular area of town, we don't have a council-adopted policy. However, our standard practice in this area and what we usually kind of hours that we typically regulate to are either 10 to 2 and sometimes 10 to 4. But we we have, we do not have a practice where any place in the city where we extend those to 10 to 6.
Okay, that's good for me. Thanks so much. I'll move on to councillor Dominado.
Thank you, and thanks for the presentation. I have a couple of follow-up questions. One is with respect to growth projections for the area. In particular, I recognize that the what's proposed aligns with existing strategies and policies and also ties into some of the funding discussions as well as expedites social housing. But do we have an overall projection for how many people might reside in the in this neighborhood?
Thank you, councillor Dominado. I'll ask Tom Winklin to respond.
Thanks very much, Mayor and council. Yes, the downtown east side plan has estimated over the next 25 years, the growth in population from 18,500 to close on 30,000 people.
Okay, thank you. So a little over 18,000 to 30,000. Okay. And then I guess tangentially related to that then is as we're supporting increased density housing, have we contemplated the need for park space and green space? Because I I know that area fairly well, and it is limited. And I'm just curious, as we're having similar conversations around the Broadway Plan, what are the plans for expanded green space?
So I can offer, Tom Winklin again. I can offer the the downtown east side planning exercise included various departments and Parks Board. And it was concluded at that time in 2014 that there was a shortage of green space, open public space, and parks in the downtown east side. And parks have been sourcing or looking for possible venues for additional park space. In the last three years, we've been working with engineering in temporary parklets as a as a pandemic intervention to assist in the shortage of places where people could gather and sit and relax. Five of those spaces are now being converted into community hubs with seating on a more semi-permanent basis. But it's nowhere near enough public open space, as is required.
So sorry, just to be clear, can you said your park board's been sourcing areas for additional green space. And you said there's five spaces currently being converted, sorry, to park space? Or just public realm, public space?
We we have been working with engineering to put in temporary parklets in the street spaces and converted some of those, five of them, to more semi-permanent community spaces to be able to sit and relax, but not parks. And those are needed. Parks Board are apparently looking for additional space in that area.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. That's important because those parklets are pretty small. My other question is around how many rezoning applications or development proposals do we have currently in the pipeline that these policies, these these policy proposed policy changes would apply to?
Thank you, councillor. Staff are just sourcing the the answer right now. Thank you.
Councillor, there are apparently three applications in process at present time.
Three applications at present time. And do we have a sense? Are these provincial-led applications or city-led?
So these applications are supported, usually supported by BC Housing, not not so much the federal government, but perhaps our colleagues from housing can give some information on that.
Sorry, just to clarify, the three applications that are in process are in DEOD Subarea 1, which these changes don't don't impact. So currently, there aren't any in application right now.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Oh, okay. I'm at my time. I may ask for a second round. Thanks.
Councillor, it's over the five.
Thanks so much. I'm just wondering, in how difficult is it right now to build this type of housing and this type of mix in the downtown east side plan? Because we've heard before that this is really, it's difficult. I I've heard it characterized by others as a unicorn to build the appropriate amount of of social housing, considering that's what the plan set out to do. So without this policy, what would this preclude our nonprofit developers from being able to do?
So this this proposed policy will make it easier for nonprofit-led projects to come in through the door because they will streamline the process through zoning and it allows a bit of additional height and density to to achieve the housing. However, you're absolutely right. It is very difficult to achieve social housing with the level of affordability that is required in the downtown east side and requires significant partnership partnerships, funding, and and all of that to make these projects a reality.
Thank you. I'm also wondering if you if you might be able to share whether or not these projects would still be eligible for the SHORT program, the Social Housing or Rental Tenure Program? So understanding that this is a separate policy, would they be able to, in parallel to this policy, also still apply for the SHORT SHORT program?
Yes, they would be eligible to apply for the SHORT program.
Okay, that's a relief. And I also was wondering, can you give me a timeframe or timeline if if everything were to to go according to plan? And I understand that means comments back here and there. From inquiry to DP, what would the timeframe be?
Thank you for the question, councillor. This is Teresa O'Donnell. I think it would be a safe guess to say about two years. We do typically spend additional time with our nonprofit and social housing providers to make sure that we get a good, solid application and they can be successful as soon as as possible. And we also try to align that timing with any kind of financial deadlines or funding deadlines that they may have from the from BC Housing of the province.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell. Really appreciate that information. Also wondering if you could just share whether or not this nonprofits would also be able to cross-subsidize to deepen affordability in the lowest third to shelter rates.
Listen, I'm going to ask Dan Garrison to step forward. I think because of the deeps, the the very low incomes, I think deep subsidies are almost always required to make these projects work. But Dan, maybe you could help.
Just cross-subsidizing. I'm wondering if they can take from some of the market units and and cross-subsidize that to deepen the affordability, if that's all right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, be quick. Thank you for the question. Yeah, definitely the the requirement to achieve at least a third of the units at the shelter component of income assistance are very deep subsidy is why there's an allowance both in the zoning and in BC Housing's, most of BC Housing's programs, for there to be some low-end-of-market units. In this this case, a third of the units at the low end of market. And that's intended to partially, at least, to allow for financial viability of the project through cross-subsidization.
Okay, thanks very much. That's all my questions for now.
That's our weave up to five.
Yeah, my first question is recognizing the appendix K we have in the Broadway Plan that showcases the performers from going to a 5.5 to 6.5. Can you talk about how going from a six-story wood to an eight-story in this proposed report is financially feasible to meet these high subsidy levels?
Thank you for the question. So these projects aren't financially viable. They require significant investment from senior partners and senior governments and nonprofit partners to be a reality. So what we're doing here is enabling the zoning so that we can, you know, the zoning's in place so that when there is subsidies that the nonprofits can can access those quickly and and get the projects underway.
Okay, but I'm assuming that some of the nonprofits asked for this extra FSR as an opportunity to deliver. How did the number come? Because to me, when we look at the appendix K, the data in front of us today looks like it's unfeasible recognizing go from wood to cement and steel. So it looks like it's highly unfeasible. So I'm just, I'm just still trying to understand the rationale behind this. I guess my second question is, on the third, a third, a third, how do we believe that we can deliver that in this plan, yet that's impossible to deliver in other community plans?
So through through government partnerships, we can deliver deeper levels of affordability. And in fact, of the 1,900 units that have been approved since 2014, 49% of them have been at 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 income assistance rates.
Oh, wow. That's great. My next question is recognizing that this council passed an opportunity to create a connection from Strathcona through the traditional wetlands of Squashwash and Kawaskas, that they talked about an opportunity there on the lands near Thornton Park. And I'm just wondering, is that still a consideration with staff? Is that the redevelopment of the city lands that are there by the Skytrain station could deliver on the greenways and green space that was voted on by council?
Councillor, I believe the areas of town that you're talking about are not within the proposed changes of the downtown east side that we're speaking about tonight. But in the Broadway Plan, the these are, these are just very specific to the downtown east side Oppenheimer Oppenheimer District.
Okay, I'm looking at the Thornton Park East Fraser Lands FC1 lands. Are those not included in this report?
I'm I'm sorry. Could you restate your question again, sir?
Yeah, under the Thornton Park East Fraser Creek FC1 lands in the report, are we looking at putting through that voted-on connection of parks and green space in those areas? Is that part of the opportunity in this amendments to the zoning and development that we're looking at today? And if not, how come?
It it's not part of the the proposal before the council tonight. It certainly is something that we can look at tonight. All we're looking at is enabling additional height and FSR.
Okay, so in the future, we could look at.
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Councillor, we could probably ask that next councillor on an inquiry or something. If that's helpful to you.
Okay, I'll send it into staff as well. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Kirby.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Let me direct my first question into the GM of the Park Board, Donnie. Can you hear me, Mayor?
Yeah, just need your video on to fill.
Oh, sorry, it bumped off. Okay, sorry about that. I want to direct my first question to the director of the Park Board, Donnie. And it's really with respect to the work that the Park Board has done with respect to van play and the equity piece. And I wonder if you can comment how important equity was in the development of van play, and especially what was identified for the downtown east side in terms of equity gaps and divisioncy of park, and how, for example, things like Oppenheimer and loss of any green space or ability to be in that green space at different times of day has played out in the community.
Thank you, councillor, yes. Equity-centered van play, and van play is where we would hold our policy for solar access. We know that if we have solar access policy that provides shades at four o'clock as the solar access time, we will be losing two hours a day of programming. We know that Carnegie does a ton of programming in Oppenheimer Park, 365 days per year. Oppenheimer Park is the most park deficit. That community is the most park deficit community in the city. And so while we are looking to find other park spaces, we recognize that it's next to impossible to find park space in that community. And so protecting the precious park space that we do have is what we're hoping to do here. And again, what I had said earlier was, we think that a compromise of 5:00 p.m. would work and would have the least amount of impact, a small percentage of total possible units. And that's what we're working toward with the planning staff.
Okay. And can you draw a parallel, for example, like when a park goes out of commission, like Oppenheimer, in the most underserved neighborhood in the city, what kind of impacts that had on the community, and what you saw when programming had to be pulled back and the community didn't have a chance to gather? What did you see?
Thank you, councillor. I think we know that when we don't have programming in Oppenheimer Park, when you have space available, things go on in a park that maybe aren't the kinds of behaviors that we want. We know how important that the programming in that park is and in that community. We know that folks are being, will be building units that don't have outdoor space. So this is the only outdoor space for folks in that community. We have worked with the community, with the various members of the community, and they have articulated their need and their desire to program that park in a way that keeps it available to the entire community.
And does that include an important, that being an important place for our indigenous communities?
Right now, we have an indigenous garden there. We have the elders who meet there on a regular basis, a daily basis. We know that we, when we reopened the park, we had a ceremony to bless the park and to heal the space. And that community is on a healing journey, and this park is at the center of that journey.
Okay, that's very significant. Thank you for that. I want to direct my next question back to city staff, and it's really around, in this kind of update, if you will, to the regulations that's being brought forward, are we looking at anything around a paradigm shift, other than sort of increasing, I know we're moving towards more self-contained units, they're trying to deliver more units, but is there any thought or consideration given with respect to changing up the model and including not just housing units, but complex care or onsite medical facilities or allowance of FSR towards some of those medical needs?
Staff?
Thank you, councillor. Apparently, we do allow institutional uses, medical uses, to be included in development in the zoning. So it can be part of the use of a building.
Can we take, you know, a more explicit role in compelling or requiring some of that? Because that's certainly where we're seeing a lot of the gaps. And I know that the Mayor's Caucus has really been advocating for more complex care, not just housing. And can the city take a more explicit role than we're doing through regulations like this?
I'm not necessarily convinced that we can take a regulatory requirement for that, because it would then more than impact on the viability of that development taking place. In certain circumstances, it would require partnerships with health authorities or other agencies that are providing such-
Okay. Okay, next question, just for time. With the DEOD, how much is the official development plan itself, not just with respect to the overall discussion we're having here, heights and shadowing, but how much is the policy itself to routine?
You're past your five.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, council, that's it. Four questions on the list. And I'm just going to move now to the speakers. We have speaker number one, Graham Wood.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Sure. You're a little faint. If you can move a little closer to your mic, that would be great.
For sure. Can you hear me now?
I think we can hear pretty well. It's a little faint, but give it a shot, we'll see.
I'll try my best. Hi, good evening, mayor, council. My name's Graham Wood. I'm here tonight representing the Bloom Group Community Services Society, 62-year-old organization operating throughout Vancouver with a substantial presence in the downtown east side, in particular in these subareas two, three, and four. I'm just speaking really briefly on, in support of this amendment, for various reasons, but in particular, and it's been spoken about already, just providing clarity for organizations like ours to be able to see what we can do on certain sites and certain areas, just to be able to speed up, as earlier mentioned, speed up the processes and get a lot of, a lot more clarity into the design of potential projects that we could, we could provide in this neighborhood. From a very, very high level, we operate a number of facilities that were built in the 1970s, the last influx of a substantial amount of funding from the federal government. Those now, you know, 50, 40, 50 years on, are showing end of life. And these types of policies really help us determine what we can do on the site. As a number of councillors have mentioned, that doesn't necessarily mean that the economics make sense. We still require partnerships with the province, the federal government, other funders. But this sort of clarity will just only help us be able to deliver new units or net new units over and above if we're redeveloping sites. So a big thank you to staff, to be honest, to recognize this in advance of applications coming in. And it's meetings like this that probably save a meeting down the road. And that's very, very much appreciated. So I'll leave my comments brief, but that's my support, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do you have a question, Councillor Weave? Up to five minutes.
Yeah, thanks for coming to speak today. There's obviously conversations about access to sunlight at Oppenheimer. From your understanding of having properties in the area and work, how important do you think it is that we make this balance between sunlight and increased densities?
I think that's a really good question. And I know the Park Board has their comments there with the 6:00 p.m. comment. To be honest, by decreasing that time to 4:00 p.m., we have one property in particular where we could probably achieve, this is an estimate, I'm saying about 30 to 35, maybe 40 additional units just from that change. So still allowing a little bit of, you know, not restricting light completely, but given the location of one of our sites, that's probably a effect. So it's a bit of a trade-off. I do understand that. But given that a lot of these sites are very, very hard to develop, hard to get funding for, and also understanding we're in the middle of a housing crisis and will be for quite some time, it's these sort of policy changes and a little bit of that interplay between, you know, need for light and need for housing, that I think is fair. You know, eliminating that altogether may increase that substantially. But I can speak to this one site in particular, it's about 30, let's just say 30 to 40 units, just on that two hours of light.
Isn't it important for the residents in that tower to have access to light, access to nature, green space for their mental health? Like, isn't the well-being of the residents part of the component of your organization in ensuring that their mental health is stable as possible?
Oh, absolutely. I think that's a fundamental, fundamental point. That lights doesn't need to be provided on the street, though. We look at buildings like in New York across the High Line called the Solar Carve, in particular designed to allow light into the facility and light onto the street. So I think it's a bit of a trade-off. Is that light particularly important at street level or within the building? That's a design question. We can achieve that within the building, too. On a rooftop, on an amenity, there could be space within the building itself to provide that light. It doesn't necessarily have to happen on the street level. And I think the effect, in particular, on the site I'm speaking about is so marginal that it wouldn't really be noticed that much. It affects honestly a bit of a sidewalk and maybe two to three meters into the park for a particular period of time. It doesn't create a black hole of light, a bit of a shadow for a period of time. But I think those design considerations and absolutely mental health of the people we serve, but that can be achieved within the building itself. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Councillor Easenova, up to five.
Thanks so much. Just to follow up to Councillor Weave's question, how important is it, do you feel, I mean, you obviously prior to this policy have experience with the downtown east side plan and the district schedule and the development requirements, and how difficult is it for nonprofits? I mean, I alluded to it and asked the question of staff earlier. But currently, without this policy, how difficult is it for you to develop new housing within this plan?
Without this policy in particular?
Yes.
It's going to be a little less difficult, if that helps. It's never going to be easy. What this particular policy change does, though, is provide clarity on scoping, on being able to know what we're building or could build, being able to go to the funders with that certainty is very, very helpful, because we can identify if there's gaps in funding, or we need an equity grant, for instance, to fill that gap. This type of policy allows us to do that very, very quickly. So savings in time, we don't have to go back to the drawing board, so to speak. So it achieves that. It doesn't necessarily make it easier economically, per se, to operate, but in terms of knowing what we can build and how quickly we can build it, it absolutely fixes that.
Thanks so much. Do you think it makes it more, the clarity on the ability to cross-subsidize across the, you know, third, a third, a third? Do you think that that will help with your operating costs and to deliver dignified housing where people are like, you know what? That's the social housing building. Instead, there's different levels, and no one should know or may know who's paying what rent behind each door.
Oh, yeah. If I have your question right, allowing a bit more density may allow, you know, more rents or more revenue through the project. It's also offset by costs. So it's not necessarily a direct benefit that way. And in terms of cross-subsidization, whether we're in the downtown east side or we're in other communities within Vancouver, as our structure allows, there could be cross-subsidization across a number of our buildings that are assisting achieving that in the downtown east side. Rents from different neighborhoods within our portfolio, being able to achieve that as well. So it doesn't have to be a project-by-project basis. We could take a portfolio approach. Does that address your question?
Totally does. And just so you know, I have a background in non-market housing. And moving things around and tap dancing often is important to balancing things out, I understand. I'm just looking at how this is going to help you in that way. Can I also ask, with the expedited timeline that's, you know, presented here, along with the ability to still tap into programs and apply for them like SHORT or social housing or rental tenure, does that offer you some comfort that you may be able to actually alleviate the pressures on your timeline and deliver this housing more quickly and swiftly as your clients are needed?
Absolutely. And even beyond SHORT, it would, you know, you look at the Rapid Housing Initiatives out of CMHC, by having certainty on the land or certainty on the zoning and what we're able to achieve and, you know, where our setbacks are, having all of that effectively, you know, more or less clear, allows us to do a number of those, where in the past, you know, federal programs that would need a certain timeline would be very, very hard to achieve, because they'd know we would have to go through the rezoning process. So in something like this, I don't want to say bypassing the rezoning, you know, there's a lot in there and meeting the community needs, but it provides that clarity to our funders on a project basis that this could be achievable, because we already have that. We're not, there's not going to be another curveball our way, and then we'd be well on our way to meeting many of these, many of the needs of the people that we're serving.
Thanks so much. Really appreciate you making the time to speak with us tonight and to answer my questions as well.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are more questions for you. Just, councillors, just to have to remind you that we have to have your video on in order to mark you as present for purposes of quorum. And now I'm going to move on to Councillor Swanson. Councillor Swanson, up to five minutes, please.
Yeah, thanks for coming in. I just have one question. Will you have, if you build a place here, will you have separate entrances for people at the different income levels, pour doors, or will everybody go in the same door?
Our intention would be that everyone goes in the same door. The only time that may be different is if we have different levels of programming. If we have, say, mental health support or complex care needs, and within the same building, there may be specific changes that we'd have to do. But from a residential standpoint, a rental standpoint, we would all be, we would ensure that people would come in on one door, and, you know, those rents would be mixed through the entire building. We would consider all of those things, but a pour door would not be one of the things we would consider.
Okay, thanks. That's it for me.
Thank you, Councillor Swanson. Councillor Kerr, up to five minutes.
Yeah, I also have just one question. My other questions, the other questions I had in mind have been already asked. And the question is this, this policy change would increase the height beyond six stories for buildings. And my understanding is that up to six stories, you can build wood frame. Above six stories, you can't. And that building and wood frame is actually much less costly than building in concrete. So I'm wondering if this height increase actually makes a substantial difference to you in terms of the cost of building the housing and thus delivering of affordable units?
It's a case-by-case basis, but I understand your question. You're basically saying the increased density is going to cost us more to deliver it, therefore making it less economically viable, I think is what you're-
Correct, yes.
And when I say case-by-case, because it's not always the case, it's not always the case, case-by-case, sorry. It allows us to scope very quickly. So by having, say, the increased density, we can run those really quickly. We can run wood frame, hybrid, mass timber, for instance, a lot more rapidly and be able to do that cost-benefit, knowing what our envelope limit is. So I know that's not answering your question directly, but it just provides that clarity. And as sort of technologies change, to be honest, what may be true today about wood frame may change as the years progress and technology changes. Or we have spikes in lumber prices. Again, there's a whole number of factors that may play into that. Not all things are equal, I guess is what I'm saying.
Right, right. Is it significantly more to, or which is significantly more expensive to build if you're over six stories, concrete or mass timber?
Again, case-by-case, what's more expensive? I would say concrete fully. I would say concrete fully. But there's applications of mass timber, sort of concrete hybrids. But we're getting into sort of a building code question.
We are. I'm just thinking, you know, this policy is about height, and I'm thinking about affordability based on cost of building. So that's the connection for me.
Well, no, I appreciate the question. And even the current sort of downtown east side policy, to this effect, and, you know, staff can correct me because I'm probably wrong, but hasn't really changed in maybe 20 years in this neighborhood. And apologies if I'm way off there. maybe 20 years in this neighborhood and apologies if I'm way off there. But it's, you know, sign of the times and it's changing and adapting. And if this means it's going to stay this way for 20 years, at least it provides clarity. And if technology or pricing or building code changes, the envelope is still known.
Yeah, appreciate your comments specifically around how mass timber is less than concrete and, you know, that's certainly the way we're going in terms of climate action. So thanks a lot. I appreciate that.
No worries. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Just one second, council. Thanks speaker. That's it for questions for you. We'll go on to the next speaker in a second. I'm just reading a note here. I'll be right back to you. Okay, that's fine. Thanks. We're moving to the next speaker, who is Jill Atkey, speaker number two. Jill Atkey.
Hi, good evening, mayor and council, and thanks for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm Jill Atkey. I'm the CEO of DC Nonprofit Housing Association. We're the umbrella group for nonprofit housing providers in DC. I'm speaking in support of the proposed amendments to increase social housing in the downtown east side. In essence, when a nonprofit project enters the municipal approvals process, it's really vulnerable to three critical risks. Time, cost, and uncertainty of approval. So the longer the process takes, the greater the costs and uncertainty for the project. The higher the cost, the fewer opportunities there are to create greater affordability and make the project financially feasible. And Graham just touched on some of that really, in a really tangible way. And then the more uncertainty created and the more unpredictable the final approval is, the less chance the project will be built. And so the staff report currently being considered by council addresses all three of those risks. It's going to shorten the process, saving costs and creating certainty for nonprofit projects. Those cost savings will have a direct impact on the rents in many projects and make that one-third, one-third, one-third split more achievable. And it will make the project approval predictable, meaning projects will be put forward. Projects that are put forward will ultimately be built. And so it's a really important, it's a really important amendment from that perspective. I would say that this council has essentially a perfect track record of support for nonprofit projects. Approving these changes will not only reinforce the strong support of the sector, it's going to signal to senior levels of government that you're anticipating funding into the community housing sector in Vancouver and that you're willing to create the necessary conditions to facilitate really quick delivery of affordable housing or as quick as possible. And so really, really supportive of the staff report and the staff recommendations and encourage you to support the amendments as well. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Councillor Carr has a question for you. Councillor Carr, go ahead.
I had a question that was so very clear and concise. I just want to congratulate you. You had a great presentation.
I'm learning as I go. I'm getting clearer. Thank you councillor Carr.
No other questions for you. Thank you very much for calling in tonight. Council, that's it for the thank you. That's it for the registered speakers. So I'm making my first call for additional speakers. The number is 1-833-3538610, code 1061445 pound. And I'm just going to ask the clerks, do we have anybody in chambers or on the line?
No.
Okay, I'm making a second call now, the ridiculous second call. Anybody in chambers or on the line?
No, nobody online or in the chamber.
Okay, thanks council. We are at 7:15. I think so. I can see there. Yeah, 7:15. So we'll wait five minutes to see if anybody calls in. 1-833-353-8610, code 1061445, hashtag or pound, and we'll see you at 7:20. Thanks. Call anybody else on the line or in person?
There's no callers on the line and nobody in the chamber.
Thanks so much. So seeing that there's no additional speakers, the speakers list is now closed and as few or no public comments received after this item in 5:00 PM, we're going to close the receipt of public comments. And I'm going to go to staff and the staff have any closing comments?
We have, thank you, mayor, we do have one quick closing comment. And it's a clarity clarification on a typo that was in the summary and recommendation note within the, that within the DEOD, ODP, a height of 7.6 meters was proposed in the writing of it. This is a typo. Instead of 7.6 meters, it should be 30.5 meters or 100 feet. And so we apologize for missing that. But the correction is that instead of the 7.6 as listed, it is 30.5. That is consistent with how the bylaw amendments have been written. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And just to clear, there's also a yellow memo that's in my script too. Is that correct?
No, your honor, that was a housing needs report. There was not a yellow memo on this typo as the clerk just caught it for us tonight. So apologize for that.
Okay, sorry, because in my script it says there's a yellow memo, but maybe I'm just misreading it, but I think that's what it says. So, okay. Thanks for the clarification. I'm going to ask council, do you have any further comments for staff or questions, sorry, for staff? Councillor Dejova?
Thanks, mayor. I'm actually happy to move. Oh, I see someone else on the queue, but I was happy to move the recommendations unless no, I'll put myself back on later on then.
Councillor Wee, up to five minutes for questions.
Yeah, just one follow up question and that's on the working relationship with Heartboard and City on the 5:00 PM. We talk about where that fits in, recognizing it's not in this policy today. But I'm just wondering, is that something that's being reviewed? Is that something we're working on? And what's, how do we take that information and look at this report?
Yes, thank you councillor Wee. No, that's not been reviewed. As a matter of fact, tonight was the first time we've heard of the 5:00 PM suggestion. So we have not had an opportunity to look at that. We do know that going to 6:00 PM will knock out about 176 potential units. And so it would be somewhere under that for 5:00 PM, but we haven't had a chance to model that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Dejova. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so go ahead.
I'm happy to move the recommendations and I do have some comments, if I may, mayor.
Second.
Okay, I'm going to move us to a main queue. And so go ahead councillor Dejova, you have up to five minutes for debate.
I wanted to thank the speakers who came to speak to council tonight, especially for their expertise in nonprofit housing and the sector and the industry and bringing those perspectives. Working in non-market housing is what in fact inspired me to run for city council when I was elected to the Vancouver Park Board. And I want to say that I understand that there are some great intentions in this district schedule and development plan. But I have heard, as I have mentioned in the questions that I've asked staff before, building in the downtown east side can be difficult. I have heard it termed as trying to make a unicorn come to life because really it can be not only difficult but very expensive. And unfortunately, that hurts people who are looking for the deepest affordability and require the deepest affordability and that core need housing. So I do appreciate that not only will this offer more height and the ability of nonprofits to offer that third, one-third, one-third mix, but at the same time that it will also offer a more expedited process that doesn't preclude nonprofit developer or nonprofit development partners to access programs like the SHORT program. So I really am impressed with the recommendations before us and really appreciate our staff for the work that they've put into this. It's something that I've been hammering away for now over two terms at council and just really wanted to make sure that I pointed out, appreciated staff for this, but also explain the reasons that I'm supporting this. And I do think that this will be a game changer, especially in the downtown east side and the abilities of nonprofit housing providers to provide not only housing, but integrated housing to people to give them more dignified opportunities to live in our city. Thank you.
Councillor Swanson, up to five minutes? You might be on mute? Councillor Swanson?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, so I will happily vote for this. I just crunched some of the numbers in one of those slides. It said that 550 social housing units were built since the lap was passed in 2014. And half of them were at shelter rate. So that works out to about 28 units per year at shelter rate in the downtown east side. Where we have so many people who are homeless. And I think that one slide is like, is a perfect example of why we need to put more money in the capital plan for site acquisition. So anything that we can get more housing is good. I see the shadow argument. Sometimes it would be nice to have more sunlight. Sometimes also actually in the downtown east side, it's nice to get more shade. You'll notice in the park that most of the people are sitting under the trees on a hot day. And certainly in a heat dome, a little bit of shade won't be bad. So I guess if all things were equal, it would be nice to to have the sun, but I think the housing is more important. That's it.
Thanks councillor Swanson. I don't see anybody else on the queue here. So I just want to remind councillors that if your video is disabled, and this is in our script now, you'll be marked absent for the vote. So I'll just again ask you to keep your videos on. Right. And so just reading one more thing in the script here. Okay, great. So I'm going to call the vote now, council on this. Councillor Dejova? Great. And that's unanimous. Thanks very much to the speakers and staff for all that work. Council, we just have to take a couple of minutes for, I think clerks, are you okay to go now? Or did you want the three minutes just to clean things up?
Yes, we just need a couple of minutes to let the staff switch out.
Okay, council, so let's take three minutes and I'll call you back just after 7:30. Okay, clerks, how are we doing?
Could we just have two more minutes, Mayor Stewart? We just need to get a couple of things sorted out here.
Sure, no problem. Okay, so let's take three more minutes.
Yes, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Ready? Aye, ready. Okay. See, make sure we've got everybody. Give counselors a couple of minutes to get their cameras on here. Counselors. Counselor Dejanova? I think we've got. Okay, I'm going to start. And so first ask, does any member of council wish to declare conflict of interest on this item? Let me know now. Three, two, one. Okay. Have the clerk now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is a report by the General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability to amend the zoning and development bylaw and the license bylaw to include new definitions for gas stations and parking uses to permit EV charging, new business license categories for gas stations and commercial parking lots that provide enough EV charging to meet minimum standards and to increase the annual business license fee fees for gas stations and parking lots that do not provide enough EV charging to meet the minimum standards set out by the city of Vancouver. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendations of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing. Two pieces of correspondence in support, four pieces of correspondence in opposition, and two pieces of correspondence regarding other aspects related to the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Great, thank you so much. We do have speakers at this council, so we should hear from, there's a PowerPoint presentation. We have Margarita Pakis. Play that one right, from the Sustainability Group. And please proceed with your presentation anytime you like.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Marga Pasas. And today I'll present about the climate emergency action to encourage EV charging at gas stations and parking lots. So this slide just shows the breakdown of carbon pollution in Vancouver. And to note, gas and diesel used in vehicles is the second highest source of pollution at nearly 40%. This shows Vancouver's carbon pollution over time. And while we have decreased our emissions by 2000, since 2007, the Climate Emergency Action Plan has a target to cut emissions by 50% by 2030. This is in line with the IPCC, and it's becoming more urgent with recent weather events, including the heat dome and atmospheric rivers we've had locally. The Climate Emergency Action Plan has six big moves to decrease carbon pollution in Vancouver from transportation, buildings, and through carbon sequestration. The policy we're talking about today is an action in Big Move 3, which overall aims to transition vehicles in Vancouver to zero emissions vehicles. We know that a lack of access to charging is frequently cited as a barrier when people choose not to get an EV. In response to that gap, Big Move 3 has actions to increase public, home, and workplace charging. Approval of this policy will increase charging on private land, which is expected to be just one part of that growing network. As part of the Climate Emergency Action Plan, council directed staff to bring forward recommendations to change the business license fees for gas stations and parking lots to encourage the installation of EV charging. These are the recommended bylaw amendments that support this program. So for the zoning and development bylaw, we would change the definitions for gas stations, card lock fuel stations, and parking lots to permit the use of EV charging. And for the license bylaw, we would change the definitions for gas stations and parking lots to permit the use of EV charging. We'd also create definitions for marine service stations and card lock fuel stations. We would have to create new business license categories for gas stations and commercial parking lots that do provide enough EV charging to meet city specifications. And we'd have to increase the annual business license fees for gas stations and parking lots that don't provide enough charging to meet those specifications. So this is the recommended approach. Gas stations and commercial parking lots that provide a specified amount of charging would qualify for a business license fee that's similar to what we have today. Businesses that do not provide that specified amount of charging would be subject to a higher business license fee. So the map in the background shows the distribution of gas stations and parking lots in Vancouver. So last year, there are about 66 gas stations and almost 400 parking lots in Vancouver. And the city owns EZ Park, which represents over 100 of those parking lots. Also to note, two gas stations and about 60 parking lots in Vancouver already offer EV charging, so they see the business value in doing so. In terms of our rationale, we know that increased access to charging could support Vancouver's residents, including many of Vancouver's renters, who might not be able to access charging at home. Charging at these locations would also be more visible. And this could reduce barriers by giving residents more comfort about their decision to purchase an EV as their next vehicle. Gas stations can provide charging at locations where people are used to going to to fuel up. And parking lots can provide charging at locations where people will already be parking. Offering charging at these locations could also attract customers who might not otherwise visit these businesses. So in terms of our timeline, this project launched in 2020. So we did some background research and analysis. We also contracted a consultant to do some modeling and analysis for us. We held an engagement process in May of last year. And based on stakeholder feedback and the consultant's model, we created a draft program design with support from DBL staff. And we've collaborated with DBL and legal services at each critical step of this process. And one of our guiding principles is to make sure that this is simple for staff to implement. In January of this year, we held another stakeholder session to get feedback on the draft program design. And we're here at council today with our recommendations. So I'll just share a brief summary of the engagement we did. So I mentioned in May of 2021, we held Phase One of engagement. We presented our high-level proposal to get initial feedback. It was well-attended by representatives from gas stations, parking lots, EV interest groups, and BIAs. The attendees seemed open to the program and interested in the transition to electric vehicles. But some did raise concerns about low demand for chargers, space constraints at gas stations, and accessing power. The survey received eight responses. We heard that cost, utilities, logistics, things like, you know, being in a shared strata building, and low demand for chargers were concerns. Stakeholders felt like EV charging would present a good market opportunity in three to 10 years. And they would like supports like improved rate structures from BC Hydro and financial incentives. Once we had a more detailed program design, we circled back with stakeholders in January of this year. Stakeholders were again interested in the policy, and they asked questions around the logistics of offering charging. For the survey, we had 17 responses, and respondents cited cost, having enough space, accessing power, low demand for chargers, and supply chain issues as concerns. If this policy is implemented, businesses who currently do not have enough EV charging to meet proposed city specifications said that they'd be somewhat or very likely to install enough charging to meet those specifications. So now shifting into the policy design, this is what the policy aims to achieve. This policy can grow the charging network and reduce barriers to EV adoption. By encouraging charging citywide, we could add charging in underserved areas of Vancouver. Additionally, we want to catalyze the shift to electric vehicles. EV sales are increasing, and provincial policy is strengthening. So we're already seeing this shift to EVs, but this policy could help us get there faster. At present, the business case for installing EV charging at gas stations and parking lots is not strong. So we don't expect significant private investment at these sites based on current economics and policy. So a significant intervention is necessary to increase EV charging on private land. The recommendations in this report could be a strong policy tool to encourage investment at these important sites. And here's a recommended program design. For gas stations to qualify for the lower fee, they'd provide charging that's at least equivalent to one DC fast charger. For parking lots, they'd provide charging that's at least equivalent to four Level 2 chargers. So we're specifying power output, so those kilowatt values there, so that businesses can choose how to fulfill those requirements. For example, a parking lot could install a mix of Level 1s and Level 2s if that made more sense for that business and for their customers. And again, these are just minimum amounts. Businesses can choose to install more charging if they, if they'd like to. In terms of fees, the license fee for gas stations and parking lots that do provide enough charging would be similar to what we have today, including any annual across-the-board fee increases. For businesses that do not provide the specified amount of charging, the annual license fee would be $10,000. So $10,000 is at the high end of the range we tested through the consultant's analysis. But the model showed that a higher fee was needed to encourage behavior change such that businesses would install charging. A fee that's too low would likely not encourage that behavior change. And that's really the goal of this policy. It's to change behavior and encourage charging. It's not to raise revenue. But any revenues raised through this would cover additional costs required to implement this program. And then anything left over would fund the Climate Emergency Action Plan. In terms of exemptions, marine service stations and parking lots with fewer than 60 stalls would be exempt from this policy. So that means they'd automatically qualify for the lower business license fee. If this program is approved, these changes will come into effect in 2025. The rationale behind the delayed implementation timeline is to provide enough time for businesses to prepare for these changes and to account for the supply chain issues we heard about through engagement. So in terms of how we arrived at that policy design, we looked at a few different scenarios using analysis done by Densky Energy and Climate Advisors. So they did an economic analysis to assess the costs and revenues associated with installing different types and amounts of EV charging at gas stations and parking lots. Based on this, we were able to do some analysis of our own and test how different policy conditions, different charging requirements, and different business license fees might impact the business case for adding charging. We took a close look at a scenario that's close to today's conditions, but with improved EV policy and higher charger utilization. So a realistic scenario, and these are the financial results from that scenario. So it's a snapshot of 2030. So the cost to install EV charging, so that's to install the specified amount of charging to avoid the higher business license fee. For gas stations, it's $136,000 for one 50-kilowatt DC fast charger. And for parking lots, it's $100,000 for four Level 2s. So that parking lot figure is a bit conservative. It accounts for extensive electrical upgrades, which likely wouldn't be needed at all parking lots. So for profit, again, that's a snapshot of 2030. For, for gas stations, it's $6,000. For parking lots, it's $5,000. The gas station number there does account for additional customers that would visit the convenience stores attached to the gas stations for parking lots. It does not include additional parking fees, but we can, there would likely would be additional revenue from parking fees from the customers that would choose to visit these parking lots because they have charging. Businesses that install charging would avoid paying $10,000 each year. And based on the profit and the avoided fee, the payback period is eight years for gas stations and seven years for parking lots. So again, the business case is not strong, but the intention is to use business licenses as a policy tool to encourage charging. And based on the model, it would encourage some charging since we'd see some businesses adding charging. And that's the deployment number there. That's the number of businesses that choose to add charging. For gas stations, it's 21 stations. So this could actually increase the amount of fast chargers we have in Vancouver by nearly 50%. For parking lots, it's 80 lots. And if each of those lots installed four Level 2s, this would nearly double the amount of Level 2s we have in Vancouver. Also to note, the province just announced an increase in their rebate program for a limited time. So instead of covering 50% of the rebates, now they're covering, or the, the cost of the charger, they could cover 75% of a fast charger, for example, which could cover up to $75,000. I mentioned earlier that Vancouver owns EZ Park, which operates over 100 of the lots in Vancouver. 60 of those lots would be in scope for this policy since they have 60 stalls or more. Seven of those lots are already in compliance, as they already have at least four stalls dedicated to charging. And 21 of those are close to compliance with two to three chargers. Terms of engagement, representatives from EZ Park participated in our engagement process, and we met with Team EP, which are city representatives that liaise with EZ Park. EZ Park may also choose to partner with a third party to install and operate the charging. And by adding charging at EZ Park locations, Vancouver could be a leader in this space. EZ Park has locations across Vancouver, so we could grow the network in a more evenly distributed way. Vancouver could pioneer charging at underserved locations and allow more residents to select an EV as their next car. Thank you. That's all I wanted to share today. I'm happy to take questions.
Thanks so much. We've got a bunch of questions for you. Counselor Weave, you're up first for five minutes.
Yeah, thanks a lot for the report. My first one is, as a former director of EZ Park, the conversation we had is that they would provide a business case to the city and it would get denied. So I'm wondering if we changed the policy to reduce the barriers for EZ Park to get fast chargers, recognizing that it was difficult before for them to get the business case through the city?
Thank you, Counselor.
It's a little outside the scope there, Counselor Weave, but I'll allow it. Go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor. I'd like to call Ian Neville up to answer this question.
I'll just leave it there. Thanks for the question. We will actually probably need to get back to, to on that answer as far as how we're approving those through the Team EP process these days. So we'll respond back.
Okay, yeah, just I noticed that you talked about the policy objectives, reduce barriers, but it's difficult for a business case because it's not strong. However, I think having EZ Park as a leader. And I guess the next one is for the capital funding to support this program, is this something that's been working through our capital project to ensure that we can support as many EV charging stations in those underserved communities that might not have a business case, but people in those communities want to have equitable access to be able to have an EV when they're not able to have one in their primary home?
Thanks for the question, Counselor Weave. Ian Neville again. So if I understand your question correctly, you are wondering if our own capital plan can cover all of these areas, or are you asking?
Not all of them, but you talked about like, as an equity strategy, there are some areas of the city that people say, I can't get an EV because the, right? There's, I don't have access to my strata building. So as an opportunity, is the city looking at equity displacement of EV charging, even if there's not a business case, to ensure there's equitable access to EV charging around the city?
Absolutely. That's actually one of the primary focuses around our public charging program. It's really focused on those underserved areas now, and that is how we target it.
Perfect. Really appreciate this work. Thanks.
Counselor Kirby?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So help me, I'm trying to look at this sort of through the common sense lens, you know, coupled with obviously the kind of council's full commitment, I think, to going electric and ensuring the infrastructure. But help me to understand why somebody would charge at a gas station when they're usually just passing through, right? We have less and less gas stations in the city. They're going away. And usually people stop in, they fuel up, and then they get out of there as quickly as they can. So like, are you envisioning that, they're also limited quite often in terms of space? I think of one near me. And it's quite difficult with the limited geographic footprint for somebody to park. For example, if they're parked, to actually try to negotiate around the pumps and get in and out when cars are parked or lingering. So like, I'm just trying to understand just the common sense of why would some? So like, I'm just trying to understand just the common sense of why would somebody charge at a gas station on a limited footprint when they're not staying there, unlike a community center or a library or somewhere that there's been?
Thank you, councillor. Yes, so for gas stations, people are already used to going to those locations to fuel up, and we're already seeing some of the gas stations in the lower mainland add charging. For example, there's a Petrocan on Broad and First, I believe, that already has charging, as well as a location in North Vancouver. For charging cars, it actually, if it's a high-power fast charger, cars could stay there for about 10 minutes, which maybe still isn't ideal, but it doesn't take as long as people think to charge. In terms of space-
What kind of charge would somebody get if they put in that high charger? Because I know we had this debate when I was in part where at community centers between, didn't go with the higher ones because the cost went kind of medium range, but how much charge would that, somebody get for that 10 minutes and how far they'd be able to go?
Yeah, so it depends on the car and on the charger, but for DC fast chargers, typically you can get three, two to 300 kilometers of range per hour of charging. So it's ideal for stays of 10 to 45 minutes, but it does depend on the car for that one.
So it might be your emergency charging situation because you need the extra 10 to 20 kilometers?
Yes, yeah. So for charging cars, it's more like charging a phone than it is like refueling a gas car. You kind of just charge opportunistically, like when you get a chance.
And don't we actually want to, like, I mean, the gas stations are already leaving the city. Don't we actually want to phase them out? Because we're moving to electric vehicles. So isn't it kind of a declining sector, kind of like the gas tax?
It's definitely declining a bit. So since 2012, we've had an 18% decrease in gas stations in Vancouver. But from 2018 to now, it's stayed pretty steady at around 66.
In the consultation you did, did you engage with the gas stations? And how many have the space for cars to stay? Not just to kind of pull up alongside the pumps, but to actually stay and spend some time?
Yeah, so we did engagement with gas stations. They were included in our consultation. And we also did some desktop analysis just using, you know, Google Earth and looking at the parking spots available. So it does look like there are one or maybe two gas stations in Vancouver that only have one spot. But it averages on around five spaces per gas station, so most of them actually should have enough space to support at least one DC fast charger.
Okay, and not to belabor this, because again, I'm super supportive of electric charging, but does it make sense to have somebody pay 100 grand for one spot? Like, I'm trying to look at sort of where we get the best bang for our buck of encourage, kind of getting that critical mass. And ideally, we want these gas stations to sort of peter down over time. Like, does that really make sense? Is that the best target that we can do in terms of reduction?
Yeah, so if it's strategic for the gas station to install the charging, I mean, they can charge the customers to use the charger, and they'd also be eligible for low-carbon fuel standard credits. So the modeling shows that there is a positive return on investment over time. In addition, if it doesn't make sense for them to install the charger, it's not a requirement, so they could choose to pay the $10,000 fee.
So we just charge them for not doing something? Okay. I'm gonna move on. My next question I want to get in is, you said that you're not going to charge for parking lots under 60 stalls? How many, the 293 lots you said are have under 60 stalls?
Thank you, yes.
Why wouldn't we? Like, why would we charge a gas station that has one spot, but we wouldn't charge a parking lot that has 59 stalls?
Thank you for your question. About 200 of the parking lots would be in scope after that exemption. Since we are just, this specification is for 26.6 kilowatts, around four level two chargers. Smaller lots might not be able to support that in terms of, you know-
Sorry, did you say, because I have limited time, did you say 200 of the 393 have less than 60?
It's roughly 200. We just did a desktop analysis, but the city, if this is proposed, if this goes forward, we'd have to do some research and collect some data.
I don't understand why we would exempt them.
Yeah, so since we are specifying four level two chargers, smaller lots might not have enough, as many resources as a larger lot to support the four level two chargers or equivalent.
Okay, how am I doing the timer? Am I up?
That is the five minutes. Councillor Carr, you're up for five. There is another chance for questions after speakers, councillor.
Thank you.
Great. So first of all, I'm wondering if there is a if gas stations can charge for charging, like, we couldn't resell electricity, as far as I know, as a city. So can gas stations do that? In chargers?
Yes, thank you for your question. Gas stations actually can charge the customers for the use of their chargers. I believe this is a recent policy change, but they'd absolutely be able to. And they'd also be eligible for low-carbon fuel standard credits, which really helps the business case for adding charging.
What's the low fuel standard? Like, what do you, explain that to me?
Yeah, so the low-carbon fuel standard, it's a provincial policy that requires fuel suppliers to supply a certain amount of low-carbon fuels, including electricity. So they define electricity as a fuel, and then fuel suppliers, if they do supply those low-carbon fuels, would be eligible for credits, which they could basically cash in.
Okay, so that wasn't fully explained. So they get, they, how mu, I mean, so how much would they get, for example, for an average charge?
I will have to call on Ian Neville to comment for that one.
Thanks, councillor Carr. So the current trading for low-carbon fuel standard credits is roughly around 40 cents a kilowatt hour, so it's about four times the price of actually buying the electricity. So it's a fairly significant credit for them to be able to collect.
Okay, so they could charge, just like they charge for gas?
That's correct, yeah. In fact, other than BC Hydro, pretty much anyone can charge whatever they want for electricity now. As of March 2019, the rules have been relatively opened up, so it's a much more open market now.
Oh, well, that's good to know. Okay, so what's the vision that we have as a city around what will happen to gas stations as we move towards basically no gas engine cars? But realizing that there's sales of gas engine cars can still occur till, what, 2040, I think? So do we have a sense of like how long this investment in charging is, you know, going to be good? And what will happen to gas stations when all the vehicles are electric? Have we thought about that?
Thank you, councillor Carr. Doug Smith, Director of Sustainability. We haven't developed a strategy for gas stations across the city. The market is kind of playing itself. There's a possibility the gas stations may transition into electric charging stations all on their own. We just need to accelerate that pace. But yeah, the city does not have a strategy on transitioning gas stations at this point.
Interesting. Okay, yeah, this is new territory. Thank you. Mayor, that's it for my questions.
Yeah, sorry about that. Councillor Domonado, you're up next.
Yeah, thanks, mayor. I'm gonna run through a lot of questions. The first one is just, could you just clarify for me? You repeated a couple of times that there wasn't a business case for this, and I wasn't clear, there's not a business case for what's being presented to council, or there wasn't a business case for existing lot owners and gas station owners, property owners, to advance electric vehicle infrastructure?
Thank you for your question. Yes, so to clarify, the business case just isn't strong for the businesses to install charging. They do see a positive, modeling shows that they'd see a positive return on investment, but it's not a strong business case for them.
Okay, thanks. Did you, in the conversations and engagement you had, did you have some property owners suggest that that if they don't think there's a strong business case and they don't want to pay a $10,000 annual business fee, that they would simply sell the property for redevelopment? Did that come up?
No, that did not come up during engagement.
Okay. I'm curious if, when you reference parking lot, surface lots, does this include where there's, I'm just thinking of, I can think of a whole myriad of examples of properties that have, for example, one, two-story building. I can think of a couple where there's a local Chinese food restaurant. They use the parking lot for patio space in the summer. Would those parking lots be subject to this policy?
So any parking lot that needs a business license to operate would be subject to this policy, and those are usually commercial lots that require customers to pay to use the lot.
Do we have a sense of how many of those properties exist that have existing kind of retail businesses and would fit that definition?
Yeah, so just based on business licenses, we have 300, and I think it was, this year it's 399 parking lots in Vancouver that require a business license to operate as a parking lot. But again, with the exemption we're proposing for lots with fewer than 60 stalls to be exempt and automatically qualify for the lower fee, that's closer to 200 lots.
Okay, do you see where I'm going with the question, though, right? That the unintended consequence potentially of impacting where having small businesses are struggling as it is, and that they potentially, those property owners could be paying even more or passing down some costs?
Councillor Doug Smith, Director of Sustainability, just to clarify. So a business that has parking associated with their business that they don't charge for would not be subject to these rules. So it's essentially a parking lot that is a dedicated parking lot. If you're a restaurant or a mall or whatever that has free parking associated with your business, this rule would not apply to you.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it. My other question is around, did we consider exemptions in the, and I know staff in the permitting world are doing some work on this, is that we have property owners' parking lots where they're trying to do activations. They're underutilized because people are not parking anymore, so they're trying to do retail, food, other measures. Up until recently, we had one that had the OPS. Would we, they be caught in this as well, and so we'd be forcing installation of EV even though the lot's not being used for vehicles, it's being used for other uses?
I'm sorry, can you clarify?
So we have, for example, in Park, which is activating, their surface lots are not being used for parking. They're doing local installations like food, beverage, supporting local business and retail. Or in the case of recently, they had, they were hosting the OPS downtown. Would they be caught in this policy where they'd be forced to install EV even though it's not being used as a surface parking lot?
If they still have to get a business license to operate as a parking lot, they would still get caught in this. But I'm not clear if those lots specifically would still need business licenses to operate. But I think we would just treat them equally if they did need a business license.
Okay. And what about BIA-owned and operated parking lots? I think there's a number of them. And how would that work? And I think there may be a couple that have more than 60 spots. Would they also be subject to adding the electric vehicle infrastructure?
They would, if they do have to purchase a business license, just the same as the other lots, we'd have to treat them equally, yes.
Okay. And last question, where have we seen this applied in other jurisdictions, similar model to what's being proposed today?
So we've seen similar models, but not exactly the same. I don't know if any other jurisdictions have used business licensing as the tool, but the city of Denver, for example, if there's any retrofit that happens to a gas station, they have to supply a specific amount of EV charging. There's also a few examples that we have where entire gas stations are being retrofitted into EV charging hubs. There's one in Maryland in the States, and I know Parkland is working on a design competition, or they just did that for sort of the EV charging station, like gas kind of model of the future, where it's just all EV charging that they would provide. And I have to do more research on this one, but could report back. But in Germany, in the last year or two, I know that they announced that all gas stations in Germany would have to also provide EV charging.
Thanks, that's the five minutes.
Thank you, thanks.
Thanks so much. We're gonna move to speakers now. Remember, councillor, there is another opportunity for questions to staff. After we hear from speakers, we just have three speakers. The first speaker is Tim Bray, who says he's on my list, is in person.
I'm on the phone. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes, please.
Okay. Well, my name is Tim Bray. I've lived in Vancouver for 35 years.
Sorry, you are a bit, you are a bit faint. Can you speak directly into your receiver, please?
Is this better?
A little bit better?
Hello? It's my mobile phone calling the number. Anyhow, my name is Tim Bray. I've lived in Vancouver for 35 years. My name is Tim Bray. I've lived in Vancouver for 35 years, and I'm not representing anybody except perhaps EV owners generally. Thanks for having me. I've never come to council or addressed it before. I've submitted well in advance a small three-pager outlining my positions on this. Big typeface, wide margins, easy read. I've had an electric car for three and a half years, and being something of a social media hound, I've written a lot about it and gotten tens of thousands of impressions on the blog and Twitter. I wouldn't say I'm an influencer, but I've been part of the conversation with a lot of really well-informed people. I have six comments on the staff documents and proposed changes, only one of which I think is controversial. They are: one, I totally support this. It's a great idea. Please go ahead. The report omits one benefit, which is that partly as a result of COVID, Vancouver is developing a pretty nice patio culture for eating, drinking, and socializing. Every time you switch out a gas car for an EV, it gets nicer, quieter, and smells better. Number two, I think the case for putting chargers in gas stations is really weak. That's really my only controversial point, so I'll come on through the rest and come back to it. Three, there are excellent use cases for both L2 and L3 chargers, so it would be good to incentivize the installation of both kinds in parking lots, not just L2s. Four, the document proposed a requirement of four chargers per lot, and it seems to me that should be proportional to the size of the lot. I mean, to require the same number of chargers in a little half-block lot between Richards and Seymour downtown, and in the Canada place, Parcade, which is the size of a small nation, I think the requirement should be different. Five, my reading of the staff document seems to suggest it was talking about commercial pay-to-park lots. I don't know about you, but a very high proportion of all my parking time is at malls and shopping venues. Is there any way they could be pressured into offer charging? It seems like maybe a low-hanging fruit. Finally, the proposal wants fast chargers to offer at least 50 kilowatts. That's really old school these days. That was cool in 2016. For anyone who's experienced the more modern high-power chargers, 50 kilowatts is really unsatisfying. Could we look at perhaps putting in a 100-kilowatt floor? Now, let me return to the recommendation against gas station chargers. I think it turns on the following question: how long is a charging session? The answer is unfortunately complicated, including involving where you need to get to, how fast your car can charge, how much power the charger offers, and what your current level of charge is. And it's even more complicated than that because neither the output from the charger nor the rate the car accepts it are nice, simple, flat lines. They're kind of complicated curves. So in my document, I outlined some of the scenarios, but the conclusion, and I'm pretty sure of this, is that in a very high proportion of times, you're gonna need more than 15 minutes of charge time, like a large majority of times. Gas stations are entirely designed for stays of less than five minutes. This will be unpleasant for the driver and the gas station operator. Charging is an activity that should be accomplished while you're doing something, not just sitting there. In Vancouver, virtually every parking lot is close to coffee or sushi or a grocery store or a park. So there are other issues of size and noise and hot air venting that I don't have time to explore here. But as some of the councillors already raised, I draw attention to the fact that in my decades in Vancouver, the number of gas stations has steadily decreased, and this trend will probably continue, and, by the way, we should welcome it. So in this matter, I'd consider perhaps not investing in what might turn out to be a diminishing asset. So please do this. Do it in parking lots, not gas stations. Do it at all the parking lots. Do L2s and L3s in the parking lots. Make the number of chargers proportional to the number of spaces, and please do it with modern chargers. And in closing, just, I'd like to offer that this is perhaps a bit of a sideshow. The best time to charge your electric car is while you're working or sleeping. From an environmental point of view, this offers the major advantage that BC Hydro can make their grid intelligent and shift power back and forth between chargers and other needs as demand shifts. Neither I nor my car care whether it charges while I'm sleeping at 11:00 PM or 3:00 AM. So if we really want to move the needle on EV adoption, the thing to do is to focus on getting chargers into work locations and especially condo garages. I've spoken with Minister Hayman and know the province is aware of this issue, and I know the issue is difficult and has awful sharp edges, but I think there are opportunities for the city to apply incentives here as well. But that's all. Yes, this is great. Let's have lots of chargers in parking lots. Thank you.
Thanks so much. You do have a question. Councillor Kirby Young, up to five minutes.
Thank you. Thanks for speaking to council. So just following up, so you don't think the gas station piece makes sense? Because people are, as you said, passing through. They're not staying. And is that right?
That's right, and they're not nice places to spend time.
No, they're not. Do you think that it's gonna substantively provide a benefit? Like, is it worth it for those few folks who are doing the 10-minute charge?
I really don't think it does. I think the parking lots work so well and are, you know, generally located in places where you can go and do something while your car charges. You know, in a gas station, am I gonna walk away and leave it there for an hour? Seems less likely. And gas stations just aren't built for things that take a long time. They're all about getting in and getting out. It goes against the flow.
I know, that's what I thought. What did you think of the staff response that suggested that with a DC fast charger, you can get something that can at least get you to your next leg or something if you spend that 10-minute timeframe? What did you think of that?
Yeah, so this is complicated, and I'm sorry, but, you know, it depends on what kind of a fast charger, you know. You know, if I've got a state-of-the-art Porsche or Hyundai that can charge at 250 kilowatts, and all I need to do is to get enough gas to get to my home out by the- and all I need to do is to get enough gas to get to my home out by the PNE, sure, I might get it in and out in less than 15 minutes. But that's like the totally rare best case. Most people, when they charge, try and arrange things so they can just stop for a couple of hours and get enough to go to Whistler or drive around for the next three or four days. It just seems to me that the very short stay is a really rare corner case and not one that it makes sense to optimize for.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate you raising that, so maybe I'll try and get my head around it, so thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks so much, that's it for questions, but thanks for all your contribution this evening, very appreciated. Counsel, we're going to move on to our next speaker. We have Erin James Henry. By phone.
Thank you so much, I'm also joined today by my colleague Perry Billard, who I think he's calling in from a Calgary number. It's possible to add him into the conversation, and he's got some technical expertise, that would be great. Just to kind of lead off, good evening, Mayor and Counsel. We really appreciate the opportunity to put like comments regarding the city of Vancouver's encouraging EV charging and gas stations and parking lots climate emergency action plan. Speaking on behalf of SunCor Energy today. And so we are an energy company within Canada. Our purpose is to provide trusted energy that enhances people's lives while caring for each other on the earth. But more importantly, in terms of why we're appearing with Counsel today, is that we're the proud owner of Petro-Canada, and SunCor operates 17 fueling stations in the city of Vancouver as part of our network. As has already been mentioned, one of those sites is on Burrard Street, which does have a Level 3 fast charger on it. I think we'd sort of like just to sort of jump right into it, you know, we ultimately, we share the city's aim of ensuring that EV charging stations are accessible and positioned to make driving and electric vehicles convenient as possible, and recognize that electric vehicles are an important part of the collective effort to decarbonize transportation in Canada. So while we really do appreciate the idea here to sort of grow the network, to reduce barriers to adoption, we do think, and it actually does follow a lot on sort of what Mr. Bray had already outlined, we do think there are actually some challenges with this proposal as it is drafted. Our main concern is probably that there is a risk that the proposed regulation may create sort of a network of unsafe and unreliable chargers that lead to suboptimal charging experiences for consumers, slowing EV adoption and creating increased costs for retail operators. Specifically, we are the operator of Canada's Electric Highway, that's 57 sites from across Canada, to just allow EV drivers to move across all of Canada, it's sort of one connected network. This approach has taught us that it is really quite a different sort of distribution and site selection strategy are required for EV charging stations than those that are used to build Canada's gas station network. So there's a real difference in terms of where you start to pick and place EV chargers that doesn't really map perfectly onto where our current gas stations are. Some gas stations may also result in chargers that are just unsafe due to factors like traffic flows on the site, lack of lighting, cameras near the charger, insufficient parking for EV chargers to wait for the charger to be available. And that's the other kind of key point here is putting in one 50-kilowatt charger at each site really does run the risk that either drivers are going to show up and find that that 50-kilowatt charger is engaged, or it may not be in service, and then they're driving to another location. Station is also costly, come up based on the additional utility capacity to operate the charger. And so where those locations are will actually have big differentials in prices. All this being said, you know, what we'd like to recommend is this. You know, we, our suggestion is that the proposal be amended to reflect the importance of thoughtful and deliberate network design and expanding EV charging accesses in the city of Vancouver and across the province. We're proposing that site operators be able to have their charging capacity requirements, in this case 50 kilowatts per a gas station, met in aggregate by building out a more complete charging facility, which may or may not be a traditional gas station. So in practice for us, it means that we have 17 gas stations in Vancouver. Seventeen times 50 would be 850 kilowatts. We'd like to be able to essentially install 850 kilowatts of capacity where drivers need to increase those aspects of equity without necessarily being tied to making charging stations at individual gas stations, which may or may not make sense based on the location. And that's me. Now, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thanks so much, you do have questions from two Counselors. Counselor Kirby Young, up to five minutes.
Thank you, so Erin, you heard from our staff, and I'm really glad to have somebody directly representing gas station speech, right? You heard from our staff that in their analysis in terms of the amount of real estate available, they felt that most stations could accommodate that, and I heard you mention in your comments potentially one spot, right, given these are busy in-and-out places? Do you think, what's your comment on available space? And if that's kind of consistent across, if that varies by the different stations? Do you think some can accommodate one or two? Or does it provide a crunch for safety and get people getting in and out? Because I know there's also a lot of traffic, right?
Absolutely, it's a really great question, Counselor. So I think, you know, our view on this is that we currently have, you know, EV charging stations installed in Burrard Street. We think there's a few other sites that would be sort of appropriate for Level 3 fast chargers, and make that really clear, like we're not going with the 50 kilowatts because it's too slow. Level 3 chargers, though, are roughly about a million dollars per an install, so it's a higher cost. So there's probably three or four, and I know my colleague Perry might be able to get more into the details of this, that are probably suitable for multiple electric chargers. They wouldn't want to put simply one unit on a site, we'd probably want to put one or probably put two, so there's some optionality. But by no means are all 17 sites fit to install fast charging units. And part of that's the size of the site, but part of it's also the location. You know, it's just the fact that people actually have access to home and work charging, and therefore putting a charging site on some of these gas stations just probably will not be used.
Okay, do you have any safety concerns? I'm thinking of some of the really busy ones, they may not be yours in terms of Battery Cam, but like some of the, you know, there's one 41st and Oak, there's one off of Knight, that's in Grandview, that's super busy, and I see a lot of near misses. Do you think there's any safety considerations that maybe haven't been considered in terms of egress and ingress with giving people clearance to get in and out?
Yes, I wouldn't speak specifically to any of our sites on this, but I would say in general, yes, I think that is to be mindful of, that there are some stations that are probably not fit for this. We're also not terribly pleased on the idea of the installing stations in car locks. Especially car lock on Hal, for instance, just because that is a very busy site. It could be unsafe for people to actually try to charge their cars in that location. So I think that that would be sort of a concrete example, where we think that's probably not the best fit just because of the high volume of traffic and the role. Because it's mainly used for commercial drivers.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Dominado, you have up to five minutes.
Yeah, thanks, I just wanted to follow up, you'd referenced Burrard in first with the fast charger. Is, do you have a sense of the uptake there in terms of that location and how it's been used?
It's a great question, it's been, and this has been sort of referenced, I don't have the specifics. My colleague Perry might, he's actually speaking after me, so he might be able to sort of drill down into that data. But as has been said, right now, there's a lot of reasons why, you know, EV charging stations will, I think, are absolutely necessary to scale and build out, and that's our ambition, are not. At the moment, there's not a very strong business case for them for a number of factors. So we'd have to sort of drill down into what the analytics are like for Burrard.
Okay, well, may I ask your colleague after? And then, sorry, just to clarify, did you cite that the Level 3 fast charger was a million dollars for installation? Did I hear that correctly versus what we saw on the slide earlier?
That's correct, the Level 3 is roughly about a million dollar in install. It's the kind of the top of the line in commercial grade, and so it is very good, but it is a very expensive unit to install.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that, thank you.
No problem.
Right, Counsel, we have up to five minutes, oops, sorry about that, I knocked you off the list, go ahead.
You talked about economies of scale, making sure that people, when they show up at a parking lot, there's multiple sites available. Is there an economies of scale of if you put three or four, or five, or six in one space? Does it reduce the cost significantly, or is it still close to a million dollars per charger? The charging costs, my understanding, would still be relatively fixed.
For the implementation and capital cost to install them, is it similar when you start to put two, three, four, five, or six together?
Yeah, my understanding is that the unit cost wouldn't fall. There might be some other sort of synergies we could make up, but the million-dollar cost for a unit would probably remain about the same. With that said, yeah, it'd be great to put multiple, and I think this is sort of our spirit of our proposal, is it doesn't really make a lot of sense to put individual units on each gas station site. But if there is a flexibility for us to, you know, put two or three charging stations somewhere else in the city where people are going to be able to use them, I think we'd be able to kind of build out a more reliable network if we had that sort of option.
And have you used smart technology in any of your facilities where people would know which ones are open and which ones are not, so that they're not driving around to different locations?
So. So my colleague Perry will be speaking more on sort of our various technologies, but the high-level answer is yes, we are increasingly kind of building out that sort of responsive system for consumers.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Thanks, that's it for questions, thanks very much, and we're going to move on to the next speaker. Counsel, who is Perry Billard.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me all right?
You're a bit faint, I have to say.
Oh, I'll just speak up, is this better?
Not really. Can you speak closer to your microphone?
Yes, let me get my phone shut up, one second, please.
It's sounding better now already.
Yeah, okay, perfect. So, hello, everyone, thanks for having us to come and speak. My name is Perry Billard, I am the category manager of our energy customer experience team here at Petro-Canada SunCor. And that means we really have responsibility over the entire customer experience of our EV charging business, from operations, marketing, some of the business model refinement optimization, covering the coast-to-coast network of, as Erin mentioned, the 57 different stations. I believe we have 11 in BC with 22 chargers, and just one specifically in the city of Vancouver. But we have another one in North Vancouver and one outside of Langley as well. The reason we're here is to discuss some of the proposed, or some of the changes we want to propose to the amendment as it stands, the regulation as it stands now, really with the concerns around trying to develop a network that is most suited to what customers want. In our current operation of the network, we have discovered that a single charger at a location comes with a lot of operational challenges. So mandating a singular charger at gas stations is a difficult place for us to be in because the business case isn't quite as strong, and because we want to be able to build out the network in a thoughtful and planned way. Erin covered really a lot of our talking points, but I would love to be able to chat about some of the questions that were brought up earlier. The first one that Erin wanted to pass over to me was the specifics on our Burrard location. So the Burrard site is one of our better sites in the country. Vancouver and BC as a whole have really great EV adoption. And through that, we see all of our BC sites do fairly well compared to some of our sites in places like Saskatchewan, Manitoba, Northern Ontario. That being said, we are learning that the site locations matter a lot. And with Burrard, it was placed on a site that we had the space, and that filled our marketing claims, connecting the country coast-to-coast. We would be happy to look into seeing other locations and really build out where we think there is a need in, that's being developed right now. Another point I want to talk about was the cost to install the chargers. The chargers we prefer to use, because Mr. Bray and all the Counsel people have nailed it on the head, that people don't want to spend a lot of time at a gas station. But the chargers we have are positioned to, they're ahead of the market right now, they're 350-kilowatt chargers. So once cars are able to get to that level of charging speed, people will be able to come in and get a very fast charge at a Petro-Canada location. It will get them in and out quickly. The costs to install a charger like this are much, much higher than the $136,000 proposed in the business case from staff. When we talk about that million-dollar figure, that is sort of for a site all-in, depending on some of the different chargers, but this cost varies a lot. And a big portion of the cost is actually driven by the amount of power you need to bring into the site from the utilities through BC Hydro. These costs can be very high, they can be upwards of $80,000 to bring power to the site to power these very high-powered machines. And a lot of that is based off of how close your physical location is to the nearest power node. So it can vary upwards of $100,000, down to, I'm not sure where it lowest has been, but substantially lower, just on luck of the draw. So it might be a huge penalty and a huge burden on the business case if you are in a bad spot. One of the other questions that was flagged was about our ability to highlight whether stations are open or currently occupied, or if they're closed. And all our stations are 24/7, they can be used at any time. And with our Petro-Canada app and through things like PlugShare, a website for finding chargers, you are able to go online and see if a charger is currently occupied. But because of the charges we have, we are trying to get people in and out quickly with a high throughput. So if you're a driver who is in the neighborhood, looks at their phone and checks to see that it's open, it might not be open still, might be in use by the time you get there, five, 10, 15 minutes later. One other final point I actually wanted to highlight was the inclusion of card locks, the definition of card locks in this regulation. And we do operate one card lock in Vancouver, it's our PetroPass on Hal, as Erin mentioned. And that PetroPass is a card lock meant for commercial traffic. It gets lots of trucks, professional drivers. And as a business, Petro-Canada, we often do everything we can to steer our retail customers, our regular folks, away from card lock interactions, just because they are busy, crowded, high-traffic areas, full of truck drivers, of large 18-millimeter trucks, that often have trouble maneuvering around small passenger cars, especially in the world of EV, where we see such a predominant number of subcompact and coupe-type cars. We're very nervous about the safety implications of opening up that card lock property, which is already very tight to more and more retail guests, that is growing and growing as more and more people adopt EVs.
Thanks, is that it for your comments?
Yeah, great, this room, please.
Move on to Counselor Dominado for questions.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Terry. I just want to follow up on the Burrard side, I asked your colleague this, and my two questions are, what's the experience in terms of, is there a high usage of that Level 3 fast charger? And two, what are you seeing in terms of revenues?
So we can't comment exactly on usage right now, but in terms of across the network, it is one of our better performing sites. So we aren't at the point where that charger becomes transactionally or operationally profitable. And a big portion of that is we do face very high utility costs from BC Hydro to operate a high-powered charger in BC. So we do struggle with the profit. Our revenues come from per-minute billing. And that's something that we are forced into doing because we are not legally allowed to sell power. And a big portion of that is because there is no Measurement Canada-approved metering device for BC power. And that means we can't correctly measure the kilowatt-hours, or we can correctly measure, we can't legally validate, measure the amount of energy our charger comes out to the vehicle. And because of that, we're left charging per minute, and I believe in BC, that number is 27 cents per minute. So you can imagine how many minutes we would need to make a profit and to make that up on the cost of hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of investment to install those units.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful context, I think you have other questions.
Counselor Kirby Young.
Yeah, so can you, in terms of, you said the cost is not just the charging equipment, but also in terms of the power availability. With some of these facilities, would they not, majority of them, have access to the requisite power? Like across, sort of in terms of what you're representing? Would you have a percentage of where you might see a gap, and you'd be incurring those minimum costs?
Sorry, I lost you just for just one second, can you just repeat?
In terms of what you're representing, can you sort of give us a level of magnitude of where you might see a gap in a network? And where you'd be incurring those costs on sites, like half, a third, two-thirds? I'm trying to get a sense of sort of where, how how applicable these incremental costs would be in terms of the power connectivity that you're speaking about?
And it would be at almost all the Uh, and it would be at almost all the sites. For our uh fast chargers, we have them on a separate utility service away from the Petro Canada site right now. We are bringing separate servers. And as they are high powered units, they need to bring in a lot of power capacity to reach the theoretical max of if you had two super high powered cars charging at the same time, that would spike your utility bill and you need to build your utilities coming to the chargers for that hypothetical peak.
Right. So you're looking at, so you think it's pretty fair, like in terms of the magnitude of that cost, what would you, can you just verify for me what you might be looking at for an average site? I know we've heard different numbers from other speakers.
Um, to install or just on the power upgrades?
Both.
Uh, so the power upgrades really do depend. Um, I, when we looked at the numbers, we spoke on this at the B C U C, B C Hydro, um, SRP last summer, and we didn't have, we weren't able to give a total average, but our the range we saw was fifty to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to bring in the power required for our things. And when it comes to the cost of building and installing, uh, Aaron mentioned that one million dollar number, and that is on the higher end for our uh full sites. Depending on the cost to procure the actual charging unit and the power to come in, it can be towards a million dollars, but we could do one site, one small site for considerably less, probably in the two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollar range. And again, that would be our deal site plan. That would be one charger at a parking spot as opposed to a very effective multi charger hub.
Okay, that's helpful. I remember when we were on the park board, one of the reasons we didn't go with higher level charging is because the cost was so prohibitive. And so they had to go with lower level chargers. So that's that's helpful context. Thank you.
Councillor Currie. You on mute there, Councillor Currie? Councillor Currie, you're on mute.
Double muted. I'm so sorry.
Um, August. Yeah, go ahead.
Um, there were, there were two things you said that I um that caught my interest because they contradict some other statements that are being made tonight, so I would appreciate some, appreciate some clarity. Um, one thing you said was that you can't legally sell power. And that's not what I heard from an earlier presentation by staff. So can you please explain to me how you deal with that issue?
Uh, and and I I heard that as well. I think it's a bit of a technicality, um, in that we cannot technically sell power to cars because we can't measure the DC power coming out of the charger. And that's really, uh, the key difference there is DC versus AC power. All of our grid structures built on AC power, batteries and electric cars that are built on DC power. And measurement Canada hasn't determined and defined a standardized DC current measuring device. So we are able to charge customers to use the charger, but the technicality is we aren't charging them to consume energy the way we would with gasoline or recharge them per liter. We're charging them per minute of time charging.
Ah, got it.
A lot of inefficiencies. Um, it's a, it's a major problem for us in that classically, people with uh less expensive cars end up charging slower. People with very expensive, high end cars, uh, Mr. Bray mentioned the Porsche is one of the faster ones around. That's a very expensive car that charges very quickly. The people with Porsche can use our chargers and receive an amazing deal on it while we are very um just less effective on people with the slower cars, when they go Nissan lease. They pay more for the service we're offering and they get fewer kilowatt hours out of that. It's, it's not a very transparent process and it's one we're working with the federal government to try and get amended. But right now we are forced into this less than ideal pricing mechanism.
Super interesting. Thank you for those details. Um, appreciate that. Um, the second point you made that um seems to contradict some information that we've received otherwise is you said that it costs a hundred thousand dollars to res- to install a charger. Is that what I heard you say?
Uh, sorry, no, it can be a hundred thousand dollars to bring in the power capacity required to power some of these very high powered chargers.
To bring in the power, but how, what's the total cost of installation of a power charging station? Hundred thousand to just bring in the electricity or what, you know, through whatever means, I suppose, you know, power lines. Um, but we heard earlier that it was about a million dollars to a charge to install a DC, um, a level three charger.
Yes, and the the numbers vary based on the site configuration. So as a concrete example for something like Burrard, where we brought in power, we had two chargers there. That was about half a million dollars to install.
Ah, okay.
So.
And yeah.
Kind of long. That's sorry, please.
I'm very familiar with that station. I use it a lot. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that information you've provided.
Thanks. Uh, councillor Swanson's next. Uh, councillor Swanson? Councillor Swanson?
Sorry.
That's okay.
You're with Petro Ken, which is a part of Suncor. Is that what you said?
Correct. Our our tagline is Suncor is a proud owner of Petro Canada since two thousand eight.
Can you tell me what your profits were in the last quarter?
Uh, for Suncor?
Yeah.
Well, uh, Suncor had a great quarter last quarter.
Two point nine billion? Is that right?
Top of my head, it's uh I had it in front of me, but it sounds close.
That's what I just Googled. So that would, that would um pay for quite a few chargers, eh?
And it could, yes.
And are you guys planning at all on ramping down your production of oil?
Uh, my area of the business is with the Petro Canada side, so I'm not super familiar with the upstream operations. So I'm not sure what the current oil uh outlooks are. But uh, some of the good things Suncor has done are along the lines of things like the passage of net zero lines, where we're committing to decarbonizing, hit net zero emissions from the operations in twenty fifty. Uh, we're also working on expanding a lot of our biofield capabilities with things like the ethanol plant in Saint um Saint Clair, Ontario. We are diving headfirst into the hydrogen economy to try and steward this energy expansion, so.
Are you at all afraid that if we have a lot more electric chargers, you won't sell so much oil? Maybe that two point nine billion will be a little bit less next quarter?
Um, Mayor, I I don't have this section, but I'm just raising a light point of order that I think the questioning has to be directly pertaining to the application. This is not a council meeting. It's a public hearing.
Need this action, though, uh, to judge a point of order?
That's fine. I've raised it. Maybe I've interrupted it.
Councillor Swanson?
That's fine. I'm done.
Thank you. Councillor DeGenova?
Well, I've never heard of a point of order light. That's a new one for me. Um, thanks so much. I'm just wondering if if you could also confirm, is Suncor funding the new ANYS site, the Urban Native Youth Association? Is that something that you're doing with your funding as one of the largest petroleum uh producers in Western Canada? You're actually giving money back to nonprofits that meet the city goals? Could, oh, I'm sorry. Um, Mayor, I'd like to ask for a recess so I can look at my point of order because councillor Swanson's not on mute and she's speaking over me saying disparaging things.
Your clock's still running.
I know. I'm I'm asking for a recess so I can look at my point of order. That's okay?
Nope, keep going, please.
And you're not going to chair the meeting. Okay. Um, so I'm just wondering if if you could maybe tell me, is that true?
I don't need to be insulted. Thank you.
I don't need to be.
You need to have the point of order. You need to have the point of order number in order to call a point of order. I just made a ruling earlier. Please continue.
And and Mayor, your job is also to keep ordering the meeting.
You don't need to tell me my job. You need to go on with your debate. Okay.
I'm asking a question of the the person who's on the the line. So does Suncor also um invest in initiatives in the city of Vancouver such as the Urban Native Youth Association's redevelopment?
And with Suncor being such a large company, there are.
Was funded by Suncor.
And I'm not uh super close to that, but I know Suncor through the Suncor Energy Foundation is very committed to advancing a lot of um different priorities that are near and dear to our organization. Uh, indigenous youth being a huge portion of that, given the work we do with indigenous communities in the oil sands. Um, I'm not sure what those projects are. I really should be closer to those, but uh, Suncor is definitely committed to working with partners through uh Suncor Energy Foundation. And even just through things like our indigenous procurement operation, where I think the number is seven hundred and eighty million dollars that Suncor spends with different indigenous suppliers that help us run our business.
Okay, well, at risk of of being made fun of and having disparaging comments made towards me again by another councillor, I'm just going to ask you, is that something that Suncor is is uh prepared to continue investing in?
Uh, I would say yes. I unfortunately I don't get to make the decisions on that, but overall Suncor stands by their commitment to everything that we do. Um, so the Suncor Energy Foundation has done some of the great things. I know the culture at the company is very focused on putting people first and really trying to be stewards of the environment and working with our partners across the country.
Wonderful. Well, thank you. I hope to see you at the opening of that center. I hope that all of my colleague, my council colleagues will be there with us. Thank you.
That's it for um questions. So now I are for from speakers. Uh, thank you uh for participating this evening. I am going to now make my first call for additional speakers. Uh, the number to call is one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, code one oh six one four four five pound. And clerks, have we got anybody on the line or in the chambers for this item?
We have no speakers on the line and no speakers in the chamber.
Second call for anybody who wants to speak to this item. The uh, the number is on the live stream and on Twitter. Uh, clerks, anybody happen to call in in that thirty seconds?
Uh, nobody on the line and no one in the chamber.
Great. Okay, council, we'll take a five minute break. I'm making the third call now. We'll come back at eight forty eight. Thanks very much.
Hi, Mayor. Yeah, we have no uh callers on the line and we have no uh no one in the chamber.
Thanks so much. So uh, let's see. Sorry, I just lost my place there. Uh, right. So as we have no, uh, so we're closed the speakers list now. We have no additional speakers and we'll uh close the receipt of public comments. And um we uh ask the staff if they have any closing comments.
Uh, Doug Smith, Director of Sustainability. Uh, just in brief, uh, just to clarify the cost associated with the chargers. The city of Vancouver has seventeen DC fast chargers that were either installed or being installed as we speak. Um, and our costs are based on those costs, our our direct experience putting in the chargers. They're at the upper end of the cost, so our numbers are conservative. Um, and that includes the B C Hydro connections as well. Um, and then I would just like to to finish with, we we're clear in our research during the Climate Emergency Action Plan that we have a shortage of electrical uh charging capacity for EVs, for electric vehicles across the city. And um, we can either put them in through these type of means, or we can pay for them directly as taxpayers. And so this is one option for us to uh increase the network of charging stations and have less of a burden on taxpayers. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Uh, there are questions from council to uh staff. Uh, councillor Kirby Young, you have up to five minutes.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I just want to ask a couple of follow ups. Um, and Doug, can just pick you up on that last point that you made. Um, you said the city of Vancouver has experience. What's been our average experience um on a site cost all in for putting in one of those reference DC chargers?
Thank you, councillor. I'd like to call up Ian Neville to answer that question.
Thanks, councillor. Uh, Ian Neville, Senior Sustainability Specialist. Um, so on average, we usually see between one twenty five and about one fifty per site for a DC fast charger. Um, as the speaker noted, it is a little bit site specific. Um, but uh again, our chargers are more in line with what we would be requiring under the um, under this new standard. under this new standard compared to what Petro Canada is putting in, which are about seven times more powerful than what we're requiring.
Okay, but your estimated cost in the report, you showed 100 or 136, but you're saying our costs were potentially a bit higher based on our real life experience?
At at the top end, I would say on average, they're actually lower. At the, I would say on average, we're looking at about 125, but we certainly have had tricky sites that have gone over that number.
And did those sites have the requisite power for the most part already or no?
Generally, at our sites, when we install a DC fast charger, there isn't enough power there. They they do require a fair bit. So we do tend to bring in a dedicated service for that, and and that can cost, the BC Hydro connection cost for us has been roughly about 20% of the capital cost.
Okay, moving on, can you help me to understand? Because there's one thing I still can't get my head around. Is the exemption of parking lots with under 60 stalls? And I think the rationale, and I'm happy to hear, understand it better and hear it again, was that they're smaller sites, it doesn't necessarily make sense because of the smaller footprint or just having one charger? But that's the situation with the gas station. Being smaller, maybe just having one charger. So I I can't square those things. Can you help me to understand why we would exempt those if we require a similar footprint in a gas station to have it?
Yeah, so that's a good question. For the gas stations, the city specifications are for 150 kilowatt chargers. So that's just one parking stall. For for parking lots, it's four level two chargers or equivalent. And again, the parking operator could choose to do a mix of of more charging or or less charging if it makes sense to them, like more lower powered chargers or fewer higher powered chargers. But on average, it'll be about four level two chargers. That's four parking stalls.
Sorry, maybe I just I have limited time, so I'll be clear on my question. I'm asking specifically about the parking lots, the exemption in this report of excluding the parking lots with less than 60 spaces.
Yes, so for the parking stalls with less than 60 spaces, they'd have less opportunities to make revenue from parking fees than, say, a parking stall with, you know, 200 to 400 stalls. And that's kind of based on some data that we ran, ran kind of the sweet spot of where a good cutoff would be.
So is it just because we think gas companies make more revenue than the parking lots do? And that's why?
No, we looked at both of the the proposals quite separately. So for gas stations, one charger per site seems to make sense based on what we've seen, you know, in Petrocan. They have two, but one charger is probably a good bare minimum. And then for parking lots, you know, more cars visit those sites to park for long periods of time. So more chargers would make sense, up to up to four for our minimum. But again, that's just a minimum.
I know you, I'm I'm still really not clear, and I'm not, I'm not feeling either I'm missing something or I'm not getting a clear response on my question. You're saying that more chargers would make sense, but you're exempting the minus 60. I just am looking for really black and white, clear answers to why we're exempting it, because they theoretically could have lower requirements than the bigger lots, for example, in terms of the number of chargers recognizing the size. And I hear you talking about, well, what would fit and what's optimal, but why are we excluding them? Other than, other than they have less opportunity to make revenue?
Councillor Doug Smith, Director of Sustainability. So it it is mostly because they have less opportunity to pay for them. These can be very small lots. They can be more more smaller local businesses. So it's it is based on revenue. For the gas station as as well, they do have much larger revenue opportunities to pay for the charges as well.
So doesn't, but if you think that we have to do everything possible to reduce our emissions and climate action can't wait, it's just based on who can pay for it?
We felt it was a reasonable cutoff for the business case for approximately seven or eight years for both the gas stations and for the parking lots. For the smaller lots, the business case would be significantly worse.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, councillor Dominado.
Thanks. Yeah, just a couple of follow up questions is one. Can you clarify for me the how we landed on the $10,000 fee in 2025 if you don't install the EV infrastructure? I totally, I get the model you're trying to propose is, hey, the incentive is you keep your business license fee stays low. If you put the infrastructure in, but if not, it goes up radically. But I'm just curious, 10,000 versus 5,000, 2,500, like, can you just help me understand how we got to that number?
Yeah, so based on the modeling, we looked at a few different scenarios using different business license fees. And the $10,000 fee, again, it was on the high end of the range that we tested, but it showed good deployment numbers as well. The the return on investment was still positive for the operators that did choose to install the charging. So it's mostly based on the deployment. Again, the point, the point of this policy is to encourage charging. So we picked the the business license fee based on that.
Right, okay. And then can I just clar, get clarification on page eight of the report? I'm looking at the table three, illustrative examples of potential annual revenue and the adoption rates and deployment. I'm looking at the adoption rates. Is is this over? It refers to Densky's model predictions for 2030. So is are these adoption rates over time? Is it over eight years? I'm just looking at the four lines that sort of see, you see lower adoption rate, and then it goes up to 80 to 90% adoption.
Sorry, just one second. I'm just going to pull up the report.
Yeah, no problem.
Is it, sorry, is it the deployment rate that you're looking at?
Yeah, I'm looking at the table three adoption rate, and it's got the first line, 10%, 20% for gas stations, parking lots, and then 30. But I'm just, is that over time? Is that a gradual? Or is that just based on, these are assumptions. If, hey, in the first year, 2025, we could have an 80% adoption by gas stations and 90% parking lots. And if that was the case, then it would translate into these revenues. Or is it just, these are different scenarios as opposed to a gradual, over time incremental adoption?
Right, so this was actually just for illustrative purposes. It's just illustrative examples of potential annual revenue to the city based on different adoption rates. So the first row there, the 10 and 20% is if the adoption rate is quite low, then we'd see, we'd see low deployment and the revenue that we'd see from the $10,000 business license fees would be quite high. And then on the other ra range of that, we see, we have less revenue from the business license fees because more people are avoiding that fee. Yeah, but it's just a snapshot in one year.
Good. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
And then the last question, just around reporting back. I, and maybe I missed it, but I didn't see a specific report back. So assuming, you know, implementation for 2025. Is there an opportunity to give direction that there be report back in 2026 so that we can understand both the opportunities and challenges that have arisen with implementation if this is supported tonight?
Doug Smith, Director of Sustainability. So absolutely, council could give that direction to us to report back. We do report back every year as part of the Climate Emergency Action Plan on all of our initiatives. So it wouldn't be a detailed report on this, but we would include a high level summary of the success of different programs like this. But if council wanted a specific report back, that would be possible as well.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, I'm just considering in the context of some other sort of policy implementation that we've done where there's been sometimes unintended consequences and we, and it don't surface until the implementation. Empty Home Tax Row, and while successful, has had some, you know, implementation challenges in the early years. So that's where I'm coming from. I think there's other questions. Thank you.
Councillor Boyle.
Thanks so much. I just have one question for staff, which is, I'm wondering if you have estimates on how much it would cost us to build the number of chargers predicted through this policy if if we weren't to support this policy, but still we're trying to to meet these goals of a build out of public chargers, what the public capital cost would be?
Thank you so much for your question. We might need to to run some numbers, so we'll have to get back to you on that one.
Okay. Do we have a kind of estimate? I guess I'm just thinking we're heading into a capital budget discussion and obviously, these are badly needed in one way or another. And so I'm just wanting to be thinking about those kind of rough dollar amounts.
Yeah, this is Doug Smith, Director of Sustainability. I just did a very quick back of envelope. It'd be between three and $4 million.
Okay. Great. That's helpful. Now, I will leave it there, but thanks so much.
Thank you. Councillor De Niro, up to five, please.
Thanks. I'm just happy to move the recommendations.
Okay, thank you. There is nobody else. So we have I have councillor Carr. Just one second here, folks. We're just going to make just one second. Yeah, okay, we're fine. So councillor De Niro, you've moved the recommendations. Would you like to speak to them?
In the interest of time, I'm good and I'm off the queue, but I think councillor Boyle is, so.
Okay, sorry. Councillor Boyle, up to five minutes, please.
Yes, I'll be really quick. I want to thank staff for this. I think it's a really important component of our rollout of EV infrastructure. My family drives an EV. We don't drive it very often. But we don't have charging at home, and so we do charge in these types of public spaces around the city. I can tell you, you know, we certainly have charged in in chargers that the park board, thanks to past park commissioners, has installed around those spaces. And public spaces by grocery stores. When we've been in other places, we have charged in gas stations. I do not mind leaving my family at home and bringing a book and sitting at the charger for half an hour if that's what's needed. And have done that at a gas station before as well as many other places. In Vancouver, of course, gas stations are are close to many other places. And so I certainly don't think it would be a problem to go and park at a gas station for a half hour and walk and get a coffee or stroll along Broadway or Broad or wherever to to use that time. So the the you know, of course, helpful to have concerns raised. And I can tell you as someone who looks for charging in the city that I'm not concerned about those things. I think this is an important policy. I appreciate the work staff's done on it quite a bit. Of course, there's always learning to do, but I I hope it passes and I look forward to the greater accessibility to these types of public stations that will allow more people who who can't go car free, who who need to have a car to make it an electric car.
Thank you. Councillor Swanson, up to five.
Yeah, I'm going to support the report. I thank staff for doing all the work. I thought it was right on when Doug Smith said that gas stations have a large revenue revenue opportunity. Just going past my local gas station, I think they're charging $2, $2.32 a liter today. I think it would be unrealistic to expect them to voluntarily install a device that could reduce the amount of gas that people buy. So if we're charging them $10,000 if they don't do it, I think that's good. I think ultimately what we need is free transit. That's what's going to get a lot of people out of their cars, especially the ones that can't afford electric cars. But in the meantime, this is a good thing to do, and I hope it passes.
Councillor Carr.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. You know, the only reason that my husband and I did not buy an electric car was because we could not get charging within our condo. You know, the requirement was that we had to install it for everything, $30,000. And so we went with a hybrid. But so I think there are a lot of people who absolutely need to know that there is public charging available in a variety of locations. And I think that 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 gives them the comfort to be able to purchase an electric vehicle. So because many people live in condos in this city, and and that infrastructure is not in place within condos. So I'm very supportive of these measures. I think it will help move us towards a transition that we need to, which is you know, towards the electrification of transportation.
Thanks. Councillor Webb.
Yeah, I'm supportive. And I remember being on Easy Park, trying to figure out how we could become the charging capital of the city, because we have parking lots all over the city and made a lot of sense. So I'm really supportive of continuing to have them in park board facilities, pools, community centers, and our lots, so that around the city, we have the ability for people to charge in public spaces. And so thanks a lot from staff, and I just look forward to continuing to find ways to make this happen. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Dominado.
Thanks, Mayor. I circulated an amendment simply to ask for that report back in Q2 2026. And because noting, I thought our first speaker, and I'm sorry, I don't have his name now, and and some of his feedback and commentary was is interesting. He was very supportive of the staff proposal and the recommendations, but but I, you know, was asking specifically about, you know, the merits of some parts of the proposal. So I think it's really helpful for, from a governance standpoint, that we do get that formal report back on how the implementation has gone, what the uptake has been, how, what are some opportunities that have come that we've learned from it, and maybe what are some challenges? And so that's simply the goal, is just to have a a really clear report back on on these two new proposed business license categories.
We have a second or so. I'll go to the amendment queue if anybody wants to speak to this. Just want to check before we move on that staff, could you stick the amendment up on the screen?
Yes, it's being put up on the screen. It will just take a moment.
Thanks. Here we go. Go ahead, councillor De Niro, up to five minutes.
Thanks. Although, when I think about this amendment, I I'm actually thinking back to another report we discussed and recommendations we passed council in this very public hearing on the downtown east side plan. And I wish that we'd had a report back. In fact, that plan was envisioned and passed long before I was on council, but knowing how difficult it was for nonprofit, non market housing, I think that it's really important that we look at a report back to see how are we doing, where are we at? And for the council of the day to be able to make those decisions and moving forward and see if there's anything more that they can do to make EV charging something that that's accessible, as accessible as possible, so that, you know, just as my colleagues shared a story, I'll share my story. I also had issues. I I looked at sort of the permitting, the times, the weight. And this was long before we passed the ability to be able to run a law, a line along a sidewalk or have other charging options in the city for myself. So I and my own family to have an electric vehicle. So I'd like to say that although my other, my other family members who live in other municipalities, it was very easy for them to get a permit. It's easy for them to charge their EVs, and they all have them. You know, I'm talking about my siblings and my parents. It's not as easy in the city of Vancouver. So I think that it's important that we keep it close and watch the eye on these goals as we move forward to make sure that this this is something that's accessible to everyone and that we're using a carrot, not a stick type approach. So I will be supportive of this amendment, and I think it will be a welcome addition to the overall report. Thank you.
Okay, council, I don't see anybody else in the queue, so we can call a vote on this one. This is on the amendment to the report. Councillor Bly and Kirby Young. Great, that passes. Thanks so much unanimously. So I'll go back to the main queue. Councillor Dominado, anything else on the amended report?
I'll just add some comments. I appreciate the due diligence and research that has gone into looking at this and and wanting to, from my perspective, complement or supplement the investments that both the city and provincial and federal governments are making in EV infrastructure. I think we know it is a critical part of the puzzle to and the solution to supporting EV vehicles and and particularly in shifting, supporting consumers who are wanting to move in that direction, whether it be to purchase a hybrid or an electric vehicle if they so choose. And we do have some of the highest uptake in the entire country in BC in terms of electric vehicle adoption. So I, there's alignment there. And and it is interesting and noteworthy that, you know, while we're I know there's been points raised about the access to power to do this work. I was on a roundtable recently with a number of European nations who are struggling with adding EV infrastructure, and some of it's around supply, but also some of it is that in order to install and add that EV infrastructure and support it in their countries, they're still burning coal in order to get that electricity. And so we find ourselves in in a different position in terms of hydroelectric and but I I do appreciate the staff work on this and and looking at creative ways. But I do appreciate the staff work on this and looking at creative ways to incent EV infrastructure across the city. And and I'll look forward to, you know, that there's a report back as well on that and how that implementation goes. Thank you.
Great. That is it for comments. So I will turn it to a vote. Councillor Bly, councillor DeShnova.
My vote's not registering, Mayor. If you could vote me there, if you could register my vote in favor.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Thank you so much, council. And we are going to move to the next item. Council, we're moving to item number three. Thanks to staff and everyone who participated in the last item two. This is a heritage designation. There are no speakers to this.
We have presentation now?
Yep, one second. Just ask if any council members wish to declare conflict of interest on the designation on West 15th, the Morrison residence. And I'll let the clerks read the application first. Oh, sorry. And we needed a changeover of staff, so I kind of jumped the gun here. Do you need a little extra time?
Hi, Mayor. Yeah, we're, everybody's ready in the chamber, so.
Okay, sorry about that. If you want to read the application, that'd be great.
This is a report by the General Manager of Planning Urban Design and Sustainability to add the Vancouver Heritage Register in the B evaluation category and to bring forward for enactment a bylaw to designate and protect designate as protected heritage property the structure and exterior of the existing building at 2014 West 15th Avenue, known as Morrison Residence. The General Manager of Planning Urban Design and Sustainability, in consultation with the Director of Legal Services, recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. No correspondence has been received on this application since referral to public hearing. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Thanks so much. I'm just gonna read the toll free number, 1-833-353-8610, code 1061445 pound. That is on Twitter and the live stream. We have Elijah Sabatlan from the Heritage Group. Happy though, if nobody objects, I can just move ahead without the presentation and move right to questions. Anybody object to that? Okay, thanks. So anybody have questions on this item? I don't see any questions. So we're gonna move right to, I'm gonna make my first call for speakers. Numbers on the live stream and on Twitter, clerks, anybody calling in or in the chambers first?
There's no one on the line and no one in the chamber.
Great, thank you. And again, second call. Just check with you again if perhaps you.
Mayor, there's there's no callers on the line and no one in the chamber.
Great. So the third call, it is 9:13. I will come back at 9:18 to complete this item. See you in five minutes, council.
Just noting, someone's not.
Seventeen here, just checking to see, just give time, people time to get their cameras back on. And just wondering if there's anybody on the phone or in the chambers.
Mayor, there's no one on the line and we have nobody in the chamber.
Okay, I think we've got everybody back on here. So I'm going to close the speakers list. And as there's no public comments after 5:00 PM, we're gonna close the receipt of public comments. And then I'm going to ask the staff if they have any closing comments.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I do want to note that there is a minor typo error as well on the title of the summary and recommendations. We are presenting a proposed heritage designation only as part of this. And there will be no heritage revitalization agreement that is contemplated. I believe this is just a copy paste.
Okay, that's what it says in the title of my script. So I just thank you for bringing that to our attention. Are there any questions for staff? I have councillor DeShnova on the queue.
I'm just wondering if that is something that staff recommends, Mayor, that we strike in in the recommendations if that would warrant an amendment?
That's a good question for staff. Staff, do you have an answer?
Thank you, Mayor. This is Theresa O'Donoghue. I don't think it's necessary. The clerk is acknowledging that and she will correct it in the minutes, but thank you for asking.
Okay, great.
Happy to move the recommendations, Senator.
Thanks. Oh, I have, we have a question from councillor Kirby Young.
I'm sorry. Okay. I'll be back on the queue.
Thanks, Mayor. I was asking the queue to move them.
Well, if you'll permit councillor DeShnova to move, and are you happy to second?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Procedure that we just pop ourselves on to do that, or can we actually just do questions like normal, like regular procedure? I'm just, it's fine.
Okay, anybody want to speak to this item? Okay, councillor DeShnova?
Happy to move us forward and move us along this evening, Mayor Stewart. So happy to move the recommendations and understanding that there is to it that way. Yeah. I'm in support. I'll leave it there.
Okay, thanks. We will move to a vote then. Clerks, you could trigger the vote. Thank you so much. Vote assist in favor, Mayor. Thank you, councillor Weave. That passes unanimously. Thanks so much. Clerks, do you need any time to transition to the next item?
No, we don't. I think we're good.
Okay, thank you. So we're gonna move to the heritage revitalization agreement and designation of 2146 Semlin Drive, the Kilpin Residence. Just gonna ask first if anybody wants to ask to declare conflict of interest, please do that now. Otherwise, we'll have the clerk read the application and summary.
This is a report to add 2146 Semlin Drive, known as Kilpin Residence, to the Vancouver Heritage Register in B evaluation category to designate its structure and exterior as protected heritage property and to authorize the city to enter into a heritage revitalization agreement. The heritage revitalization agreement will result in variances to the subdivision bylaw and the zoning and development bylaw to permit the ownership to develop or to permit the owner to develop the lands to deliver conservation and maintenance of the historic residence. The General Manager of Planning Urban Design and Sustainability, in consultation with the Director of Legal Services, recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. No correspondence has been received on this application since referral to public hearing. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Thank you so much. Again, council, we don't have any speakers to this item. I do have to do my customary call. We have we have Elijah Sabatlan here again. If you have any questions, is everybody okay if I just move back past the presentation? Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for staff? Don't see anybody on the queue. There's nobody on the list, so I'll make my first call to the public, 1-833-353-8610. Clerks, anybody in the chambers or online?
There's no callers on the line and there's no one in the chamber.
Okay, second call, 1-833-353-8610, code 1061445 pound. And again, I'll call, check a second time works.
There's no one on the line and no one in the chamber.
Thank you. So it's 9:23, council. This is the third call. We'll come back at 9:28 to conclude this item. Thanks, and we'll see you in five minutes.
Hi, Mayor, 9:27?
Okay, great. So we just have a minute. I'll just alert councillors, just to turn your cameras back on. If you want to vote on this item, and we have to get quorum.
Mayor, Mayor Stewart, we do have one councillor whose whose computer has crashed. Oh, okay, she's joined. Thank you.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
Just waiting. Councillor Kirby Young is the only one I see without a camera on here. There we go. Thank you. And let's see. Great. So last call, anybody in the line or on the chamber, in the chambers, clerks?
No, no one on the line and no one in the chamber.
Great, thanks. So we're gonna close the speakers list and we're gonna close the receipt of public comments. I'm just gonna ask the staff if any closing comments on this item.
Thank you. No comments.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, any questions? I don't see any questions for staff. Somebody like to move this, please?
So move.
Second councillor Carr, thank you, on the main queue for debate. Don't see anybody on the queue, so I can call the vote on this one. Councillor Weave, you need a vote assist?
Mayor, I'm sorry, councillor Domenado, can I get a vote assist in favor, please?
I, yes, please do. Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you so much, council. That completes our four items. I have a motion to. Good turn.
Second, Domenado.
Okay, I think I heard councillor Kirby, second by Weave. Okay, thanks so much. All in favor? Yeah.
Yay.
Opposed? Great. We, that's fast. Thanks very much, everybody. Have a good weekend. We'll see you next week.